Okay, I've just sent Mary a text. Let's see if see if we get a response.
Okay, and you know, while we're while we're waiting, Mr. McNeely, this would be a good time to remind everyone who has not muted to go ahead and mute and or turn the video off. So I'm showing we have a Christian Greenwich or Greenwich, I probably completely mispronounced that last name. And Commissioner Best, we've got two people that are still not muted. So if those two individuals could mute, that would be great.
Yes, this is Saad. I've lost my screen. I have a big zoom screen, but I can't access anything else.
And I remember that happening before it should have just changed back for you, Saad.
It hasn't yet, and I can't mute until it does.
All of we've and and good news, we've got Mary with us now.
Yeah.
So you know what, Saad, on it's 4:30. If you're able to later, go ahead, but why don't we go ahead and on start the study session now so we stay on track. So Mr. McNeely, if you'd like to begin, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Antiveros. I am back to seeing seeing the screen, the standard zoom screen that we're used to seeing. So and the only camera that we've got on right now is one here, one here in our building. And let's see, I believe we have everyone muted. We certainly have a quorum. Thank you, Chair Antiveros. This is Jess McNeely from Community Development Staff. And kick off your study session agenda for your September 30th meeting. On the study session today, we'll be discussing applications that will be on your public hearing agenda on October 28th, next month's public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission. The first item, and I see that Bob is already sharing his screen, would be Zone Change 2007. That's a zone change from the G General 10 acre minimum zone to RC Resort Commercial for kind of a large mixed use primarily RV park, but also campground and resort. This is at the historic Two Guns property just south of I-40. And I will let you know, Chair Antiveros, that we have John Gunnerman, the applicant, the developer with us on the meeting as well. So if you have any questions of John and Krishan is his engineer. So if you have questions of them, we can certainly ask questions of them. Everyone has some idea of your study session. In your one hour study session, we do have four public hearing items to discuss, and then a couple other long range planning items that we want to discuss. So we will try to keep, we would prefer to keep the discussions on the study session items certainly well under 10 minutes. So go ahead, Bob.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Making sure I'm unmuted here. This is as Jess said, this is the Two Guns X. It's about halfway between Winslow and Flagstaff, and it's been a historic place where there's been, there's a KOA here for a long time. There's a lot of old development along Route 66. This is, I believe, Route 66 right here. There's an old bridge on Route 66. They intend to reuse to kind of rebuild and, you know, make structurally sound before they reuse it. But this is a very large development. The entire acreage here is 147 acres. Although this portion after this 14.7 14.7 acre portion is not part of it. And it has this interchange kind of going through it as well. A large portion, this is RV Park. This is all RV Park. You can see more RV spaces over here. There are some, and I apologize, I can't tell everything that's going on here. But there, there are some different water parks spaced out through here. There's an entertainment event park with bandstand right here. Over this side, you'll see this is where their wastewater facility would be. And they, there are a couple of pads up front that would be for maybe future commercial uses. This is Diablo Canyon that flows like a snake circuitously through this area. Beautiful canyon, as you know. Over on this side, you'll, they actually have, they have things right out to the edge. These are actually teepees used for lodging along the edge. There's some cabins over here. There's a trail that goes up through there and some little park, park areas in here. And they, they also, they're, if you're familiar with the site, Apache Cave is here. It's where there was a conflict between the Navajos and the Apaches that ended pretty badly for the Apaches. So that cave is there. They plan on cutting that off. I mean, closing it off, but leaving some material around to talk about the history of the cave. We've had some discussions with the applicant about cultural resources on this site. We have those resources related to Native Americans. We have resources related, cultural resources possibly related to Route 66. And as you know, there's some old Adobe buildings and things out here. There's just quite a few things going on. They, we have asked them to contact the Native Americans, Hopi, Apaches and Navajos. And also to look into cultural resources. At this point, I don't believe they want to do a full study, but maybe provide some information and have the full study conditions for a later time on those cultural resources. And there's a few other things here. There's actually a hotel that that would be built in inside of the cliff right. And I can't remember exactly where that is. I wanted to pull up there. They have a very extensive master plan book that describes all the different parts of this development and everything. And I think that's most of it. Are there any questions for me from the commission?
Bob, I'm curious.
Go ahead, Mary.
Oh, just what the land ownership around this is like to the south and east and west.
Oh, my gosh, you know, I can't, I believe it's a ranch. It's a large ranch, but that's a, I'm sorry, that's a good question. I have not looked into that. The applicant is here. I think they could probably tell us.
Hey Bob, this is Chris Armour. I believe all the land to the west and the south is BLM and the land to the east is privately owned. I can't remember the entity. I think they're related to the crater.
Okay.
Right. I think it's a, is it rain land that's been leased out? I think part of the range land has been leased for cattle ranching. I think there's a large cattle ranch that leased a lot of this.
May, may I jump in? I can answer that completely. This is John.
Yeah, go ahead.
The land to the south is Hopi land. The west is Hopi land. The land to the east is owned by the Bar T Bar Ranch, Judy Crosser. And from what I understand, the land to the north of us is Navajo. Thank you.
Yeah, I think there's a large checkerboard. The, the, the Hopis obtained or changed a lot of land over to trust land. That's the kind of checkerboard pattern south of the interstate.
Bob, what's the timeline on this? It seems like we need, need some time to do the cultural resource studies and I'm sure we need to look at the impact on the canyon as far as the natural resources.
Well, it's on the, it's on the agenda for next month. That's why we're having a study session. We've been talking to the developer quite a bit on this. Of course, at this point, there is an analysis that you know, first we get a complete submittal to make sure everything is complete. And then we do the analysis as we write the staff report to determine if it's consistent with the conference of plan. So those are the things that we have to do in terms of, as you know, there are policies in the conference of plan about, you know, be incentive to Native American sites and Native American research, cultural resources and other cultural resources. So what we have to do is make sure that they are in compliance with those policies. So at that point, that is what we're doing. And some of those things can be conditioned, of course, and then, in fact, a lot of things are conditioned. If an applicant comes forward and they want to do a project, they often they, it can cost a lot of money. And sometimes they, if they haven't even got approval yet, it's kind of difficult to put out that, that much money without knowing if they'll be approved. So we do condition some of those things.
And you've got game and fish taking a look at the impact on canyon.
Yes.
There's a wildlife quarter through there or not, but it would make sense that there would be.
Yes, and Jessica is here, Jessica Simmons. So she can comment on that if you'd like to hear her comments.
Sure.
Jessica.
Hi, yeah. Hi. Yes, there is a wildlife corridor through there. It's a, it's a corridor for grassland species. It's a very big corridor. It's at the point of the parcel we're looking at. It's 15 miles wide. So this would be a very small part of that corridor, although that Diablo Canyon, I went and looked at it and it is deep and wide and has lots of vegetation. So I'm sure a lot of animals would be down there using it.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, this is Commissioner Clifford. How is the wastewater going to get from that western side on the other side of the canyon over to the treatment facility? With that canyon being so deep, how is that going to be achieved? Or is that going to have a separate well and wastewater system?
Yeah, it will, it will have it, it will have a, be required to have wells if they want to do water parks in there. So the wastewater system, like we, I've said that it is over here. At this point, what we do, what we've done is we've sent the, showed the plans to our environmental quality division. And they've made comments on it. So what we need at this point is just for them to tell us that this is viable. This is something that could work. And so they, so David Monahan with our environmental quality division has told us that this is viable. It is something that that could work with what they've proposed. I'm not sure exactly how that would work. I do know, and I'll let the applicant, you know, maybe answer that. But I do know that if you go out to Twin Arrows Casino, that the water does, yeah, make it into, in that case, Padre Canyon. But would Chris or John like to comment on that? Or actually the engineers here as well, correct? One of you guys like?
This is Chris. Krishan, you're probably best person to answer that. But you know, Bob's right. The treatment plan is meant to be there in the northeast portion. We do have, you know, opportunity to use the bridge to get something, you know, piping and whatnot underneath it. If we need to push things up the hill over to that plant, but there will be some lifting required to get water needs to be treated in that direction. Krishan, do you have anything else to say about that? We might have lost Krishan. Oh, there he is.
Hi. Yes, so the wastewater from the west side of the project is going to be also conveyed to the east where the wastewater treatment plant is going to be. So there will be only one place where we will be treating our wastewater. The collection system will be a combination of gravity sewer as well as in certain places, there will be some pumps or pump stations involved.
Okay. And is this going to be a phased development where you're going to do phases? Or are you going to do it all one, all at one time?
Now, the project itself may become phased. We are not yet sure on that one. But when I look at the, the utility demand, say in instance, in this case, wastewater treatment or sewer demand, we will design this for the entire project and maybe build it in phases as needed. So that way, if we, whenever we get to a full blown, a full development, that we will not run out of space or we will not have any issues. So design will be one time for the entire thing. The construction might be based on the request.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does, do any of the other commissioners have questions of Bob? We should probably move on to our next case on this case or of the applicants. All right. Well, thanks, Bob. So Commissioners, you will see this Zone Change Request next month. Our next case is CUP 2045 along with DRO 2006. That's a conditional use permit and design review overlay review for a truck yard in a combination of CH Commercial Heavy and IL Light Industrial Zoning in Belmont. And Zach already has this screen shared. So go ahead, Bob. Go ahead, Zach.
Thank you. So what we're looking at, Commissioner, you're probably already aware of Belmont Truck Repair, which is here and sort of extending down here. That use was under a conditional use permit, but with our recent changes to the zoning ordinance in these zones, by the way, I believe it's this, everything north of this line is 10,000 and below is IL Light Industrial, sorry, CH Heavy Commercial up here, Light Industrial down here. So they own this parcel which had that use, which is now, this is now permitted by Rett. And they want to expand this use to this parcel and this parcel, which are CH 10,000 and requiring the conditional use permit and the design review overlay. Because what they want to do here is the truck yard in the CH 10,000 zone. So, by the way, this is South Belmont, obviously. The exit is over right here. And we have come off six and Belmont Stanpipe Road is right here. Properties of the here and okay. And also the, so the applicants representatives are on the line with us if you do have any questions. But here's a site plan showing the existing truck repair. I do believe that behind and onto this parcel where you see the axes, that is a slatted chain link fence, I believe. So they would have a number of spaces here and a number of spaces here now paving this to store trucks that they would repair here in this building mostly. They show landscaping up front here. And in the design review overlay, I didn't see all that much about about some of these outdoor storage type uses. The zoning ordinance doesn't require any screening other than you would need to have the landscaping up front. But with the applicant is actually asking for a waiver from, I don't have all the exact numbers and I don't want to speculate too much. But this is what all these darker plants, vegetation here is what I think they were asking to install. And it's less than the typical landscaping requirement. At least it seems that way because they're asking for the waiver explicitly in the narrative. So I can get down to in my analysis, you know, what is the difference here? What are they looking at? And the commission can make a decision as to whether or not that waiver should be approved. Here's kind of a picture of the existing building. So you see it's a stark brown, that sort of thing. And they've got some of these blue spruce. It seems like they've grown up pretty well. Behind there, those might be citrus trees on, on the property, but it seems like a fairly straightforward use, but I'm happy to take any questions or comments from the commission on it.
Okay, Chair Antiveros, Commissioners, does anybody have any questions about this DRO and conditional use permit for a, for a truck yard, truck storage in Belmont?
Okay, Mr. McNeely, I am not seeing any. So we can probably go ahead and move to the next one.
Okay, thank you, Chair Antiveros. The next case is CUP 2049 along with DRO 2008. And that's a conditional use permit for expansion of self-storage units in commercial zoning at Silver Saddle and along with the design review overlay of that expansion. Of course, this is in the Doni Park Area Plan and Zach is managing this case as well. Go ahead, Zach.
Thank you. So it's hard to see from this site plan, but this is 89. And here is Silver Saddle and I'm sure that you're all aware of the gas canopies here and the associated store here near the corner along with the, I believe it's a restaurant and bar here. Recently, I think it's a few years back, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved this area here for sales of those little tough sheds and all different kinds of colors and different units. So that's a use that's asking to be reviewed. In front of it here, between that use and Highway 89 is where the applicant does sometimes seasonal sort of stands for sales. So under pop-up tents, that sort of thing, I'm sure you've seen. In between that, they did install some, not too long ago, some, some really nice looking landscaping on a a ziriskate berm right up on the edge here. Behind that, associated with this property, the property owners, they've always had these existing sort of tan storage units here. But what they're looking to do is add on to that conditional use permit for that. New sets of self-storage units. So it would be 84 mini self-storage units in nine different buildings. And that's what you see here circled in the red. You can see the different sizes and sort of staggered around in this area. They show a landscaping plan where they add quite a bit of more landscaping. So as you're going down Highway 89, you get to see that in front of all these different, these more units up here. I do believe they did a traffic study already, even though usually that's something that we require a look at at the back end. So it's sort of ahead of the game as far as, I believe that you enter, enter the self-storage unit portion over here on Silver Saddle through here. So they've, they've taken a look at that already. And so the drainage, I believe, which again is stuff that we oftentimes see after this conceptual approval for the CUP and DRO. But they gave us some nice drawings, elevation drawings. This would be, I believe, the view from Highway 89. So you can see that these units are sort of in the earth tone colors and the landscaping in front would look nice. They also have a pretty nice looking entry gate feature with masonry split face, I believe it's split block masonry sort of pillars. So those are all things that sort of lend a some for the DRO guidelines. What we're looking at in the DRO is sort of a rustic look and these are some prefab buildings, which is not what are preferred. But if they're painted the earth tone color and they are somewhat staggered, that does meet some of the guidelines with, with that. And the way that the landscaping sort of helps to blend it in and make a lot better as well as the entry gate feature is really what makes it meet a bunch of these designer review overlay guidelines. So basically they're just adding a little bit on, renewing a bit. And they have some fairly good designs, I think, but I'm happy to take any questions from the commissioner.
Hey Zach, I've got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I would appreciate it greatly if you would let me know when you post this one. So it's very convenient for me to actually be out there and meet you when you do that. Just to kind of go over it a little bit.
I'm happy to do that. Yeah, it'd be great to see you. It's been a while since I
Too long. So I think I've figured out a way to manage doing some of the site visits with you and the rest of staff as we go forward here. So thank you very much.
Sounds good. Looking forward to it. I'll let you know. Thank you. Jess, you might be muted here if you're trying to speak, but it seems like we're done with this item.
Yeah. So Chair Antiveros and Commissioners, anyone have any questions of Zach on this conditional use permit for self-storage and DRO in Doni Park? Any questions? All right, Chair Antiveros, not seeing any. We have one left to discuss on your public hearing agenda for next month. That would be Zone Change 2012. That would be Zone Change from OS Open Space to RC Resort Commercial on three part, three parcels, 47.8 acres. This would be expansion of the Happy Jack Lodge and RV Park Resort Commercial Master Plan Zoning. Bob is managing this case. He already has his screen shared. So Bob, why don't you go ahead and let the Commissioners know what's being requested here?
Again, Commissioners, most of you are very familiar with Happy Jack, RV Lodge and RV Park. The original master plan was this rectangular piece here. Lake Mary Road runs right through the middle of it in a very wide easement. And they, at some point, a couple, a few years ago, they added this piece that they had purchased of open space that they, they added, I think, 122 new RV camping spaces, RV park spaces. And there, what they had before is a lot of, this is all RV Park. And across the road, you see a large storage area. And that's what they've had in the past. What they want to add now, Jess pointed out to me that it's on the map right here. If you look up here at the little, small, little vicinity map, you can see, you can see these three different parcels, these two that are kind of zigzaggy right here and this other parcel to the south. So these two parcels are over here in this area. And then this is the parcel to the south.
Thank you.
It's right along this forest road. There's a forest road that runs through here. You may also remember that recently, I'm not sure if it had a name at that time, but Happy, Happy Jack Ranch was developed and that was a zone change from from open space to G. So now there are several different parcels over to the west and south that are 36 to 40 acres in size, a very large parcel that requires subdivision. So we, we have some new neighbors and they're interested in this and how it, how it all plays out. And then also today, I just wanted to mention that I got a call from a lady who lives or owns property at Clear Creek Pines, Unit 1. So up the road here, a little ways about four miles from this park, there is Happy Jack. I mean, I'm sorry, Clear Creek Pines, Unit 1 and Unit 2. And they're about 50 lots each out in the woods. And I guess they feel like they get quite a bit of impact from this, from this RV park, from, you know, four-wheelers and razors and things like that. So they definitely wanted to be involved in, you know, kind of comment on this particular application. And I just wanted to tell you that upfront. If you look at the zigzag spaces, you'll see that is their open space. There is a new requirement in our zoning ordinance that requires 30% open space for the RC zone. And that was not a requirement originally. So we have had a couple of applicants who have, who have had to work at, at providing that open space. And with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Bob, have you talked to the Forest Service and gotten their input on this? How many total spaces will that, will this give the project?
I believe it's approximately 350 spaces. I'm not sure about total. I, I'm sorry, I did not add that up. I know that there were quite a few original spaces. This is 122 new spaces. And then this would be And then this would be three hundred and fifty new spaces. Oh, and I should say, the applicant is here, the applicant's attorney is here representing the applicant. So they might be able to answer questions too, if you have some for them. At this point, I, I will be contacting the Forest Service very soon on this. I have a new contact there that's, that's very responsive. And interestingly, that's exactly what the lady from Clear Creek Pines asked me today to make sure the Forest Service is involved in. Yes, they definitely should be involved with this, no doubt.
It's quite a concentrated impact. So we want to make sure we get it right.
Exactly. It is quite a concentrated impact. And as you, as, as most of the Commissioners know, I think, or all of you know that the RVs and, and razors have kind of proliferated in the forest over the last several years. Any other questions from Commissioners?
I, I spoke to unnamed Forest Service person, just asking them, you know, about this and what the impact was. And they said, one of the greatest services that, that Happy Jack Lodge provides is, is the ability for people to bring their trash there. And so they're finding a lot less.
Oh, nice, yeah.
I thought, I didn't even think about that. I thought that was pretty, pretty nice.
That, that is really good because I'm not sure what kind of service they have out of these, you know, far-flung subdivisions that are out here pretty much in the middle of nowhere. I know one of the things, one of the things that's, that's been good about this is that people are able, it has been a big demand. We hear, we hear about all the time, but people are able to bring their RVs up and park them, store them here and leave them. And then they come up on weekends, they take their RVs and go camping somewhere or they camp in the park. You know, so they don't have to drag them up and down the hill from Phoenix in the valley all the time. So that's been a big service. Something that's very sought out. Any other questions from the Commission?
And Commissioners, this is Jess McNeely. I would point out also that as, as Bob noted, the, the applicant's representative is on the call as well. So questions of staff or the applicant, the applicants available. Okay, well, Chair Antiveros, not hearing any questions. That would wrap up our four cases that are scheduled for public hearing next month. And we will be, as, as you all know, we've been pretty busy here at the Community Development Department and we will stay busy preparing the staff reports and analysis for that hearing. If you look at your study session agenda, I'll point out that we have three conditional use permits on here that are up for administrative renewal. We have not had any contact from, from any surrounding property owners on the, on these administrative renewals. And I will point out that Bethan, our NAU intern, is managing these administrative renewals for us. So I don't believe Bethan's with us, right? Oh, she, Bethan is with us. Thank you, Bethan. So do any of the Commissioners have any questions on these three administrative renewals? Okay, hearing none. Chair Antiveros, I'll move into our Community Development Department update. And the first item you see here is that we're proud to announce that, that the county was awarded a follow-up J-List grant of nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars to implement the J-List plan. Of course, several of the Commissioners were very involved with the J-List plan. And Jay is with us this evening. So Jay Christman, our director, is the project manager for this grant and he wanted to let you know something about it. Go ahead, Jay.
Thank you, Jess. Good morning. Can everyone hear me?
Yep, you're, you're good.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Chair. So Jess introduced the item. As you know, the Joint Land Use Study was approved by the county as an amendment to the comprehensive plan about a year and a half ago. And I've been working with the Department of Defense Office of Economic Adjustment, so the same grant, the grantor, since February, writing this grant. And I threw pretty much everything in a kitchen sink that came out of the Joint Land Use Study into the grant application and we received all of it. So that was very pleasant to have happen during COVID. So I'll just go over a handful of the items that are in that grant application. The first one is to create a non-compliant dark sky lighting database to help Mark Stento, who of course is our dark sky specialist, to manage that process better. It'll be a GIS-based system as well as a robust education and outreach campaign for those folks that do have non-compliant lighting, as well as educating HOAs of the importance of dark skies. One of the, the second item is a feasibility study and analysis of what type of compatible industries or activities could be appropriately cited on the Camp Navajo. That would be a direct benefit to the For Frye Project and of course forest thinning overall. Third is a proposed legislation that would help protect our military installations granted the state lands or the US Forest Service participated in a land swap adjacent to or near those, those installations. And then finally, an installation of resiliency report for Camp Navajo outlining how the threat of natural or man-made wildfire could disrupt the mission. And then how quickly they could get their mission restored. So we're very, very happy that that grant was awarded. The RFP, I completed that with our purchasing manager yesterday and it's supposed to go out to bid for notification for requests for proposals next week. So it moved along quite rapidly in the federal grant world. I'd like to ask, excuse me, answer any questions if you have any.
First of all, Jay, let me say congratulations and good job.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Best. I appreciate that.
That's, that's real money.
Sure is.
Is there any environmental action involved? For instance, is there any thinning out to the west that needs to be done or any weed work or any? Any action plan?
Commissioner Best, that's a great question. Unfortunately, the monies from the Office of Economic Adjustment for J-List Implementation Strategies, they actually call it Military Resilient Grant. They changed the name of it, of course, just to, you know, keep us on our toes with all of our acronyms. But that aside, the monies can only go to additional studies. You know, things like the proposed language for the, for the legislature that it cannot go to actual construction work or salaries.
Okay, well, so you don't get a raise, sorry. And is there any money in that to study a biomass plant? Because I know that's an issue that's important both to For Frye and also to get right with with the federal, with the Naval Observatory, so that it doesn't conflict.
Commissioner Best, another great point. So that feasibility study of what compatible industries or activities could be appropriately cited on Camp Navajo, that would be included in that, in that part of the study.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hey, Jay, got a question for you.
Yes, Commissioner Ruggles.
With, with the grant now in place, any possibility that an updated lighting ordinance may be moving forward a little bit?
Commissioner Ruggles, that's a great point and I did not mean to leave that out, but that is actually part of, part of the scope of, contractor scope of work for Mark Stento to help roll out the, the revised proposed lighting plan. So we purposely waited to see the outcome of this grant with Dan Fulk. So we're excited about that moving forward too.
Okay, that was, that was my guess on this. And the reason I say that is because I've talked to Chris Luginewell a little bit about the upcoming revisions to the ordinance. So I'm definitely on board with this and I'm aware of what Chris's concerns and what he'd like to see. And he and I are on the same page on this, hundred percent. So.
Great.
No.
Yes, thank you. Another department update is, as you know, and I'm sure Commissioner Walters is in the same boat that we are, considering he's running Miramonte. We are seeing unprecedented permit activity all throughout the department. So engineering, environmental quality, building, and of course, planning and zoning activity that you get a regular update on. When COVID hit, all the departments were asked to keep positions that were vacant vacant, not a hiring freeze by any means. And over the last week, I have been very loudly squawking the county leadership of, you know, the ridiculousness of how busy we are. Our inspectors are getting overtime every week. And I, I have been very vocal that we need to fill these positions. And I, and just today, the Vacancy Review Board at the county level meets every Wednesday to discuss vacant positions. Just today, I got approval to fill the hydrologist and the lead building inspector position. I mean, our, our revenues for the fiscal year, July one through today, are over two hundred thousand dollars over what we predicted they would be, which is just insane. I mean, it's only three months into the fiscal year. So that, you know, that money is going to thankfully fill vacant positions. So my staff can get a reprieve. That's all I've got and I'll be happy to take any questions.
I, I would agree with you. The, the sales for Miramonte is, is set record for the last three months, every month. It's just incredible how many people are coming into the area and buying and building.
It, it truly is, Commissioner Walters. And it's a good problem to have, right?
Yeah, it's almost scary. Thank you for what you do.
Well, thank you all for your public service. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, Madam Chair, this is Jess again. The next two items on the Community Development Department update are both Melissa's, the Doni Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan update and the Renewable Energy Ordinance update. So Melissa, if you could please give us an update on those two items.
Absolutely. Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Here, great.
Yeah. Good. So the Doni Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan project is moving along. We are still meeting monthly on the second Thursday of the month, although the October meeting, we may push it back for one week. And for those of you on the, on the Airplane Committee, we'll communicate with you about that soon. The, the committee is putting final touches on a survey. So we'll be releasing a community survey in the next few days using Survey Monkey to host it. But that's pretty exciting. And then we'll be moving pretty rapidly into policy review of the area plan. So that process is moving along. And then with the Renewable Energy Ordinance project, we had our first meeting with our community advisory group earlier this month. And the second meeting is scheduled for actually next. Sorry about that. I don't know. There was some background noise. For next week. And we are, so we are, we got quite a few comments so far from the community advisory group. They reviewed the, the draft ordinance that came out of our technical review. So we will keep you updated on how that progresses. I anticipate probably at least another couple of meetings with our community advisory group to craft a, a document that will then be able to go forward to you all for a work session. And just as a side note, there are some spin-off meetings, I guess you could call them. Supervisor Babbitt will be hosting a meeting with the ranchers next week to talk about their vision and their needs for these types of projects in terms of keeping ranches viable and operating. So there, there's a lot of interest in the ordinance. We, we have really good participation from our technical committee and our community advisory committee. And yeah, we're excited to be moving, moving this one ahead. Be happy to answer any questions about that. And there is one final update that we wanted to mention. It's actually not on the agenda, but it's related to all of these projects and more in that the Flagstaff Regional Plan update conversations have, have begun. And so we've been working with the city planning staff to think about what that might look like, how it might be structured and when it might all kick off. So those are important conversations and we'll keep you updated monthly as to when that would happen. The timeframe would be somewhat quicker than updating the county's comprehensive plan. But there are a lot of moving parts to that, that we may want to have, we will, we'll need to have discussions and some guidance on how to proceed with pulling all those parts together. And that's what we have for now.
Thank you, Melissa. Chair Antiveros, any of the Planning and Zoning Commissioners, do you have any other questions of Melissa on the Doni Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan, the Renewable Energy Ordinance or the Flagstaff Regional Plan update?
I do not.
Okay, well, Madam Chair, Commissioners, the last item on our department update would be item four, letting you know, as we have every month, since, since the COVID pandemic started, that the county is continuing to make operational decisions based on their phasing plan. I know we sent a couple of you our phasing plans with respect to COVID nineteen. Just to let you know, we are in, we made it into phase two in which our department opened up our lobby to the public. We did that a week ago Monday. So our lobby is now open to the public and we are maintaining a skeleton staff, maybe a skeleton with a little muscle on it, not quite skin. And that, that staff is, is available to, to assist the public who walks in. I can tell you, based on the numbers, you could probably count on one hand the total number of public who has walked into our lobby since we, since we opened back up last week. And that actually demonstrates that our department's IT and internal to our department enabling of all of our web-based systems has gone really, really well. So all of the functions in our department that require permits, whether that's building permits, wastewater permits, engineering permits, our sustainable building program, and then all of the planning and zoning actions, all of that is available online with, with very good instructions, including a video, how to use our, our portal, our web portal. And all actions can be taken care of online. So really having, having a partial remote workforce and, and being able to take care of the public over the phone and online is working quite well. And as you all know, the, just the sheer size of our community really helps a lot of people in cutting down on, you know, driving often the better part of a day just to get the Flagstaff to do something with us if they're coming from some of the outlying parts of the county. So we will continue to take county leadership on, on the potential of holding public meetings. We, we know and we hear it from, from members of the public and, and for you all and from our internal staff that we, we miss getting to see each other in person. And they're certainly a little bit lost in not, in not having in-person meetings. However, I certainly commend the Commissioners and I thank our staff and the IT staff in really enabling us to not drop the ball one bit in taking care of county business and continuing to hold these very important public hearings through web-based, web-based tools. So any questions from the Commissioners on our, on the county's kind of reopening plan and guidance and, and where we're at and, and how our department's operating? Any questions?
One for me, Jess.
Yes, John.
I am just curious as to going forward, about going forward with a hybrid system. My crystal ball and everything I read says we're not going to be out of the woods on some of this for quite a while yet. And as much as I miss being there in person and having a personal interface with everyone, I have a rather special set of circumstances that I have to deal with. And that's the reason why I ask about that. It may be necessary for me to forego in-person meetings to any degree that are inside until there is a viable, reliable and proven vaccine available. I think I've iterated those reasons to you before, but I just wanted to make it rather clear that. rather clear that, uh, circumstances that I have at home dictate that, uh, extreme care is, uh, part of the deal for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. I, I really appreciate you mentioning that. Um, and, and that's a great opportunity for us to mention that there is discussion within the county for all public hearings, all, and all public meetings. Um, and certainly we hear, those of us who are, who are planners here for the county, we hear, um, from our professional community, uh, a lot of discussion about as, um, as, you know, the entire world moves forward with this pandemic, that hybrid options, um, is certainly something that most people see writing on the wall that will be available. So I, um, we can't, um, completely tell you what the exact solution is right now. We've had some discussions with our IT department, who we are now sharing a building with, by the way. So we get some really great IT service, uh, having them as, uh, as building mates. But, um, there is technology available where we would be able to hold a meeting, such as what we're holding right now, and have, um, some Commissioners, um, some staff, uh, physically present in one room, uh, whether that's the board chambers you used to meet in or some other room. And then also having screen, uh, screen up in the room where people could log in, just like we're all doing right now. As many of you remember, uh, we have previously had planning and zoning Commissioners who would access meetings via, um, via telephone, just, uh, do a partial teleconference. And, um, that has always been available to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we would anticipate that in the future, um, uh, that would transition instead to a hybrid of people physically present and, uh, Commissioners, staff, applicants and the public also, um, virtually present in a, uh, in a web-based platform. Does that answer your question and concern, Commissioner Ruggles?
Very well, it does. Um, I'd just like to say that, uh, with an answer like that, uh, I am not submitting my paperwork to anyone saying that I will no longer be doing this. At least not for a while yet. So, uh, that, that I, I think is kind of, uh, one of those things where, uh, we're just going to have to see what things look like down the road and follow them along, see how everything goes. So I appreciate your answer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. So Madam Chair, um, that is our department update. The only other item that we put on your study session agenda was just letting you, letting you know our most recent action with the Board of Supervisors was a work session that we held with them, as Melissa mentioned, on the Renewable Energy Ordinance. Of course, any zone change, uh, or subdivision items that are before you in public hearing, uh, such as the ones on today's, um, on this evening's agenda, will go to the board. I believe we anticipate those, um, going to the board, uh, in November, um, if they move forward to the board. So with that, Madam Chair, um, that is all of our agenda items for, um, for the study session, and we'd like to open it up for Commission and Staff Roundtable.
Okay. I don't have anything, but do any of the other Commissioners have anything they'd like to bring up at Roundtable?
This is, uh, Commissioner Best. Briefly, um, I don't want to go into particulars, but it seems like every, every month, at least every other month, we have an applicant who uses the word workforce housing. We have a definition for workforce housing in the county. Thirty percent of the income of somebody at a meeting income should not, shouldn't be, shouldn't cost more than that for their housing. But we don't have a way to create dedicated, long-term, permanent workforce housing. We're in an interesting situation in the county where, uh, in the country really, where, uh, sorry if you can hear those dogs. Where, where the economy is terrible and the price of housing in areas like Flagstaff is going up like a rocket. When we had people building what they say is workforce housing, there's nothing to say that someone from Flagstaff or Phoenix or California can't buy that, uh, property. There's no limit on who can buy it and there's no limit on what they can do with it. People can buy them and turn them into vacation rentals. And, and there's no way to keep them long-term as workforce housing. And I'd like to address this issue in some way and I'd like advice. Maybe this should be an agenda item in a work session. Maybe this is simply the wrong venue and we need to go to another whole department. Maybe this could be something the long-range planner could take on. But it's just frustrating to me, month after month, we hear people saying long, uh, workforce housing, and yet we don't have a plan. The city has a plan. Maybe we could partner with them. So I'd just like to hear any comments that anyone in the meeting has.
Commissioner Best, you say that the City of Flagstaff has a plan. What is that plan? And we've only got five minutes, so we may have to just cut the conversation short at some point. But what is the City of Flagstaff's plan?
Well, they.
And also Commissioner Best.
They build housing or they contract housing and, uh, they have, they take some parcels that they own and they put housing on them. And that housing is permanently for workforce housing.
Can I add something to that? Because I did just specifically ask for the City of Flagstaff's Affordable Housing Plan. And they don't actually have one. They have different programs and there's different documents. I got about six different things. And, but they do have multiple programs, but they actually do not have a plan.
Interesting.
Okay. Commissioner Son and Commissioner Williams, is the term workforce housing and affordable housing, are those synonymous?
They are now, yes. And now they've gone, uh, they've kind of gone away from workforce housing and now it's affordable housing is, I think, what they are pretty much using. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
I'd like to add one thing here. Just recently, um, I have, um, become a member of the board for the, uh, a Community Land Trust, uh, that is a very small one in Flagstaff. And this is, uh, a means of providing, uh, affordable housing, but, uh, it, it is not dependent upon government funding. And the way that it works, uh, I, I'm not completely on board to the point where I could give you an update on how everything works and how it has worked in other parts of the country. But, uh, it's a difficult road for it here in Arizona, uh, because of, uh, the way state statute is structured in terms of, uh, government involvement with it. So it is primarily in the private sector, but, um, I could, uh, as time goes on here, I think I will be a little better positioned to, uh, give Sa a little bit of a heads up on what can be done and the very small amount being done with the Community Land Trust here in Flagstaff. Uh, the one in Flagstaff is primarily oriented towards preserving, uh, historic housing in the historic district in Flagstaff right now. Uh, and it, uh, just entails, uh, uh, two, uh, properties right now. And it's really sort of just getting started. But, uh, I'm looking forward to being able to communicate what this entails, uh, a little more, in a little more detail in the future down the road. So I, all I can say on that is stay tuned. There's a little bit that can be done in this. And it's not easy.
Yeah. The frustration to me is that we have, I think that we have willing applicants who would, who would participate in a program a, as a sweetener to get their projects in and say, you know, we take five lots of a, of a 50-lot, uh, project and we make those workforce housing, which means that they are for local people. And the cost of that housing remains at thirty percent of the median. I, I just, I feel like we're almost turning people away who would participate. And I think we could have one tonight and I, and I can think of several in the, in the past without a, without a program to plug it into. And maybe planning and zoning is not the right place to start. But, um, but I'd like to know where, what, what the right place to start is. Because I don't, I don't see it happening in the market. I see the market going the other way. I see the pressure from outside buyers driving things up. And just because you make a lot of small lots doesn't mean that those units are not going to be picked up by other people and used, uh, by people who are not local workers.
Okay. Commissioner Best, thank you for bringing that up. I think that you've started the conversation. I think Commissioner Ruggles has, um, really added and said, hey, I'm going to have some input to add to this. So I think we, um, we're going to have to end the conversation on that now to be continued to another time. Um, and thank you for bringing that up. The clock does say 5:30, so we're going to go ahead and start on the meeting tonight. Uh, Mr. McNeely, are you ready on your end?
So, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, yes, we, I am ready. I am, uh, kind of a co-host to, um, to our recording secretary, uh, Marty Hernandez on this meeting. So, um, I'm letting people in the meeting as well. Um, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to ask that those we've let in the meeting, if you could please turn your cameras off. If everyone who has entered the meeting could please turn your cameras off. And if you could leave your, um, uh, your microphone on mute and tell such time that you would like to speak on one of the public hearing items. Um, and then, and the fun of these meetings is a whole bunch of us forget to, uh, click on unmute before we, we start speaking. So, uh, Madam Chair, that is, um, that is all of the, the administrative stuff from staff. Um, and we are certainly prepared to move forward with your public hearing agenda, uh, for today.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McNeely. I'm going to start with the meeting rules and procedures and then we'll go ahead and hit the agenda. So, welcome to the September meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. Comments will be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. Due to the large amount of public interest in the request for a zone change and approval of a preliminary subdivision plat in Kachina Village, I will allow individuals to speak for a longer time period if others are willing to give up their time to a speaker. Each speaker this evening must state their name and address for the record. Speakers representing multiple individuals must state their name and address as well as the names and addresses of the people they are speaking on behalf of. The time of speakers that are speaking on behalf of multiple individuals will not start until names and addresses have been stated. Individuals who wish to speak and have already heard their concerns adequately expressed, it's okay simply to state your name and address and then indicate that you support or oppose this request rather than repeating information that has already been stated. After all interested public has spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussions will then take place amongst Commissioners. No additional public comments may be made unless requested by a Commissioner. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plat approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the Commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. And with that, I would like to thank everyone for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. Uh, Mr. McNeely, before we begin, I want to, um, hold on just a minute. I want to confirm with you that CUP 20-040, which is the request for an RV park in Forest Lakes, has been withdrawn. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, uh, yes. Uh, thank you for bringing that up. Yes. CUP 20-40, conditional use permit request for a recreational vehicle park, um, in the Forest Lakes area on, uh, State Route 260, has been formally withdrawn. We received that withdrawal request in writing, so that will not be heard this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that confirmation. And with that, I'm going to let the public know that if there are any members of the public joining us this evening in regards to that case, it will not be heard as the applicant has withdrawn the request. You're more than welcome to stay for the meeting, but it's, it is a, an agenda item that will not be discussed. Um, it's, it's really, for all intents and purposes, gone. Uh, Mr. McNeely, two more things. Uh, the chat board, which is down at the bottom of the screen, the purpose of that, if I am correct, is so if somebody is having, say, a technical question. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you for bringing that up as well. Um, yes, the, the chat is, it can be used by members of the public or anyone in the meeting, uh, Commission or staff in asking, uh, technical questions, um, concern about, uh, screen sharing or, or video or audio. However, the chat is not available for making comments on cases. All comments have to be made verbally. Um, and then they're actually recorded as this entire meeting is recorded and those go into the official record. Um, the chat does not go into the official record.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McNeely for that. And I would just like to emphasize that point that you just made to all of our public that, um, please do not use that chat section to express any opinions, thoughts, comments or anything else. Um, what I would like the, I would like to ask of the public is on the right, the far right-hand side, where there is a list of participants, down at the lower right-hand corner, there is a button called Raise Hand. And if you are in the public and you do desire to speak, if you would click on that button, it's going to show a hand beside your name. And then I will go through that list and call on you in an orderly manner. Okay. And last item, Mr. McNeely, um, I have received the request from Ms. Sherry Peralta that has requested that she be able to speak and be given more time on a group from Kachina Village. And I would just like to advise, if we, if Ms. Peralta is, can hear me now, I would like to advise Ms. Peralta that that request has been granted. You asked for five to 10 minutes to speak on behalf of a group of 30 and you are going to be given 15 minutes. So that's even five more than what you requested. So I just wanted to let you know that so you can start prepping your presentation. With that, Mr. McNeely, we are ready to head to item number one on the agenda, which is the pledge of allegiance. Would you please lead us in that?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Thank you, Zach, for getting a flag on the screen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. The second item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Last month, we had two meetings. The first one on. Last month, we had two meetings, the first one on August 26th, the second one on August 27th. So we are going to deal with this with two separate approvals and two separate motions. So the first one we're going to address is approval of the August 26, 2020 minutes. Would someone like to make comments or we will go ahead and move to a motion, a second, and a vote on that?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept the minutes of August 26, 2020.
I will second that.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Clifford, a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approvals, for approval of the August 26, 2020 minutes as written. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Upstate.
And Chair Ontivera's vote aye. The minutes of the August 26, 2020 meeting have been approved. Next, we'll move to the minutes of August 27, 2020. Comments or a motion in a second, please.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the August 27, 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission as stated.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Clifford and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of the August 27, 2020 minutes as written. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Upstate.
And Chair Ontivera's vote aye. The minutes of the August 27, 2020 meeting have been unanimously approved. The first item on the public hearing section is case number CUP 20-017.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. This case is the Edwards RV as a residence, CUP 20-017. In this case, the applicant is Gerald Lucy of Phoenix, Arizona. I mean, excuse me, the owner is Gerald Lucy of Phoenix, Arizona. The applicant is Brenda Edwards, also of Phoenix. The location of the property is 2461 Blue Ridge Drive in Clear Creek Pines, Clear Creek Pines, Unit 5 subdivision, that's lot 469 in the Blue Ridge area. The zoning on the property is agricultural residential, AR, one acre minimum parcel size. The parcel size is 1.05 acres. And the request is to use an RV as a permanent residence. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. These are the units of Clear Creek's Pines over here. And this is Starlight Pines and several of the subdivisions in the Blue Ridge area. This is Highway 87 as it goes through the area. And the subject property can be seen right there. It's at the edge of the forest in Unit 5 of Clear Creek Pines. Unit 6 is over here and Unit 4 is on each end right here. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject property. You can see Blue Ridge Drive. You can see that it's a long, thin piece of property. It looks like the RV, possibly the same RV is sitting there right now. RVs are here. A lot of people do use RVs in this area, mostly during the summer. And they are required to get a temporary use permit to do that. The parcel goes uphill from here, sharply uphill. And this is exactly the spot where it was proposed to be installed. Because I wanted to go through some background on Clear Creek Pines. There are, I'll just say, staff doesn't usually talk about CCNRs, but I think they're important in this case. And this is not something that came up before the staff report was completed and went out. But Clear Creek Pines, Unit 5, CCNRs do specifically allow RVs. In this case, it refers to them as trailers on specific lots, including the subject property. And as I said, many people do live here in RVs in the summer. These CCNRs, I must say, are from 1967, so they do go back quite a ways. And I wanted to point out one stipulation in that, particularly these CCNRs, and that is that trailers must be enclosed into a cabana to create a cabin-like appearance within six months of when they're set up on a property. So I think some of you are aware of this. I've, I've seen areas like this where, out in the forest, sometimes on lots, people will take a trailer and they'll totally enclose it inside a cabana, basically to make it look like it's a cabin rather than an RV or a trailer. And that is actually a requirement in the CCNRs for Clear Creek Pines, Unit 5. I also want to point out that CCNRs are private agreements between property owners and the subdivision. And the county does not regulate CCNR, so we do not want to indicate in any way that we are regulating CCNRs. It seems like an important thing to point out in terms of the location of this in the findings. Is it an appropriate location? So this is the proposal. Wastewater will be contained within the RV and water will be hauled from the local community well. Electricity will be from, from a generator or solar power or APS. The applicant's still working on that. I think in the beginning, they'll use a generator. They may try to install solar or hook up to APS if they can. They do have a generator that is, is very quiet, would be enclosed within, within walls, within four walls. I think they're called pony walls to make the sound less. The RV will be located high up on the property and it won't be readily visible from the road because of the topography and also some trees that are blocking it. It is visible from some of the adjacent properties who have cabins that are higher up on the, on the lot and they can look down on it or look kind of to the side and see it. And I'm not going to say it's completely invisible. I believe you can see it as you come down. I can't remember the name of the road. It's Verde Road, which is angles right into Blue Ridge Road where this property is located. So I believe you can see it from there, although it's, it doesn't stand out a lot. The long-term plan for this applicant is to build a home on the property. In fact, they're already working with someone on installing a septic system. These, these are all really high cost and that's the reason that they have decided to go this route right now. This is a site plan showing the subject property. You can see Blue Ridge Drive. Verde is in here somewhere coming in this way. There's a pad right here which might be used for the house. I'm not quite sure, but they're, I think they're thinking about using that for the house. And there's another pad higher up where the RV would be installed. And this is a picture of the RV. It's, I think, a 1982 Exella. It's a, it's a, it's kind of a nice classic style RV. This is a picture of the subject property. This is the pad where the RV will go. There's already a shed here and so, you know, some other things. But this is the, the actual pad where they would install the RV. And this is another look at that pad. I think you can see an adjacent house, I believe, to the, to the side there. And then this is from the road. This is Blue Ridge Road. As you can see, it goes sharply uphill. There's another pad. This is that lower pad. This is not where the RV is proposed to be installed. And in terms of citizen participation, one of the things that seemed to happen this month is that we got our packets out and we got a lot of comments after the packets went out. So, and also after the public meeting was held, the applicants held a public meeting on the site on July 11, 2020, and no one attended the meeting. Since then, staff has received 17 comments and that's after I said the commission packet was published. 12 are in favor of the application and five are opposed to the application. The, I think, primary concern is that cabins should be supported rather than RVs and that RVs should be temporary and not permanent. So as I said before, this, this is one of the few units in this area, the few subdivisions that actually allow RVs. And a lot of people take advantage of that and do come up there in the summer and use their RVs at that time. There are also quite a few cabins there. If you look at the aerial photo, you will see that a lot of people do live in cabins and have built cabins on this, in this subdivision. I did want to say that there was an adjacent neighbor. This is right next door to the south. Does support the application, but he, he has requested that the term be limited to five years instead of being a perpetual CUP. And another neighbor has also requested the same thing, I believe. She also indicated she supported the application just for a shorter term. And as you know, we have been, staff has been recommending perpetual CUPs for some of these cases. This may be one that the commission might want to consider a term for because of these issues that have come up. And so, and that's what, that's basically what this slide is about. If the commission feels that they would like to add a term to it, and I think at this point staff probably would recommend that, then staff would recommend adding condition four. And it basically states that there's a five-year term for this conditional use permit, after which, of course, the applicant could renew it. It sounds like the applicant would really like to build a cabin on the property though, at some point, if, in the next five years. These are the findings of fact for a conditional use permit. I have addressed those in the staff report. And with that, staff recommends approval of CUP 20-017 with the four recommended conditions. And if that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Okay, Mr. Short, I am not seeing any questions from the commissioners.
I'm trying to get into the zoning hearing. No, I just can't seem to get it.
Okay, Mr. Short, to stay on track, I'm not seeing any questions from the commissioners. So I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative is available to address the commission, please.
Yes.
We're right here.
Can you hear us?
Okay. And can you please state your name and address for the record? And I would like to ask you if you have read the staff report, if you also have just heard the comments by Mr. Short recommending a five-year timeframe instead of perpetual, and if you agree with the conditions. And with that, go ahead and address the commission.
Yes, this is Brenda Edwards at 4342 East San Gabriel Avenue, Phoenix, Arizona, 85044. And
And this is Gerald Lucy, 4342 East San Gabriel Avenue, Phoenix, Arizona, 85044.
And yes, we did hear, the, we did watch the whole production on our, our thing. And we, we agree with everything that was said and would agree to the five-year term as well as, because it was really specifically what we had asked for when we, we applied.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Any additional comments beyond that?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure. I have comments, but I'm not sure if they're needed if we don't have kickback on this. But I can go ahead and say that our CCRNR allows us to have trailers on the properties and that county regulations have expanded to allow the use of trailers on residences because of a growing movement in the country to downsize living accommodations. And our intent is to build in five years. We were already required by the county to hold a meeting with the neighbors and we didn't hear any feedback from them. And we did talk to several neighbors who were in favor and gave us their go-ahead on that. And the, the most important thing is that the permit will allow us a footprint to utilize for the septic system permit that came with the sale of the property to us, which is one of our first major expenses and it is the main reason we are applying for the CUP. We cannot build a septic system without something to build it to. And we are not planning at any time to be in the trailer as full-time residents year-round. First, you can't winter in it. It'll, you'll freeze to death. And second, we can't summer full-time either because we're not yet retired. When we are, we will build. We are formally and legally applying for this permit to be upfront with the community. Our property has never had a building on it. However, all the previous owners have had a trailer on it. And the fundamental reasoning behind the request is so that we can work on our dream while enjoying our property. We have few opportunities to get up to the property from Phoenix. Most of those opportunities are dictated by work schedules and rise without much notification. The trailer was purchased specifically for Happy Jack. We want an available space in place for our limited spare time. We want to save gas and be able to get up to, with a car full of groceries and go, arriving with everything up there that already in place, tools and everything else. We intend to power the septic system within, and air stream with solar power because as far as we know, we cannot get APS electricity for the trailer, even with this permit. We will use a low-noise Honda generator sparingly if at all necessary. And again, we will only be there a couple of times a month in the summer. We have no well on the property, but our members of the community well and have purchased fire protection. A well may be another major expense to be considered. And the best thing about a trailer is that it has wheels and can be removed at will. It is not a permanent structure and cannot reduce property values the way ill-conceived permanent structure can, especially a structure that has limited funding and little time to in development. We do not want to start construction on the property until, until we can be in residence full-time to supervise it. We are artisans and have done large construction projects before, so we are aware of what an immense project it is. We intend to do a percentage of the construction ourselves. The future property will be a very small footprint as we intend to interfere as little as possible with the environment. We have miles of open forest behind us. The home will be an extremely attractive, warm, dry place with a kitchen and bathroom and sleeping quarters. The rest of it is wide-open space. And again, I would like to point out that Coconino County has expanded the definition of tiny homes to include the use of travel trailers and RVs. And again, our CCNR has always allowed the use of trailers in Unit 5. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that presentation. And I do just want to reiterate that even with putting, adding a condition number four with a five-year timeframe on that, if you were, for whatever reason, not able to meet that, you can come back before the commission and ask for a continuance. So, work, you know, work with us and I think it sounds like a great project. So with that, I am going to ask if there are any members of the public that wish to speak to the commission on this case tonight. Okay, I am not seeing any. Mr. McNeely, are you?
Madam Chair, I am scrolling through our attendees. Looks like we've got 73 total people in attendance. I am not seeing any hands raised either. I did see in the chat some concern about being able to raise their hands. The other, the other option here would be to ask just for someone to go ahead and speak, unmute and speak if, if they haven't been able to raise their hand.
Okay, okay, agreed. I'm looking and I'm not seeing raised hands. What I would like, just to advise the public, is that down on the bottom bar, there is a button identified as participants. If you click on the participant button, it will show over on the right-hand side a list of participants. And that's where you can click on the raise hand icon.
Madam Chair.
Seeing, yes, go ahead.
We do have a hand raised now by Jerry. G E R R I, Jerry's iPad. So I will ask Jerry to unmute so she can, so she can speak.
Yes, please go ahead. State your name and address for the record. Yes, please go ahead. State your name and address for the record and address the commission, please.
Hi, my name is Jerry. I'm at one-nine-five-one Velvet Antler Trail.
Jerry, could you please state your last name for the record?
Yes, Jerry Cantu. And I'm here with my husband. So it's G E R R I. My last name's Cantu, C A, N as in Nancy, T as in Tom, U as in uncle. I'm at one-nine-five-one Velvet Antler Trail in unit six. And I'm here with my husband.
Mark Clay, same address. My computer, I was trying to raise my hand too, but I couldn't do it. So I'm thinking people are having a problem doing it.
Well, state your statement or.
I just feel that it's simple. People buy into this. We bought property about, our property about the same time as them. And we know the rules. When you buy, put a trailer on, it's a three-year timeframe to build the house. I don't see why there's a problem in having. That the way it is, and that's the way you bought into the property. Why we're changing it, I have no idea. So I'm opposed to it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for those comments. The county cannot enforce CCNRs. So that's really outside of the topic of county discussion. We are simply here to discuss the approval or denial of the conditional use permit.
All right. And the other thing is, we didn't get the letter for the meeting on July eleventh.
Okay.
I don't understand who got them and who didn't. Everybody, my neighbors around me, I talked to, and they didn't get no letter either.
Okay, okay, thank you.
The only reason we knew about this was because of the sign that was posted.
Okay, okay, thank you. And that is the reason that there, that, that there is a required posting. Is so if for some reason residents were not notified, they will be. There are several safety nets to make sure that this is out. And obviously, you did receive notification because you joined us this evening.
Right.
Madam Chair, can I speak on that?
Yes, you can, Mr. Short.
The, the, our notification area typically for these types of. Applications or RVs as residents. We don't get a lot of opposition to them, as you have seen, you know, you've approved a few of these. The notification area was per state statute, and that is three hundred feet. So that would not reach to unit six, which is a fair amount away from, from this.
If it was only three hundred feet, how did you get seventeen people to say, okay?
That does, that, that does not govern who can speak or who can comment on the case. It just governs how, how far away from the property lines people are notified. So basically, it takes the, all the property lines, all, all the way around this particular parcel. And it goes out three hundred feet and anyone in any parcel that it hits within three hundred feet. The property owner of that parcel is notified of the application and also of the neighborhood meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Short.
Yeah, we just weren't note, we just didn't know about the property meeting. And, you know, as he stated, we're opposed to the five-year period.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you for those comments. Is there any other public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? Okay, Mr. McNeeley, are you seeing anyone? I am not.
Madam Chair, I am not seeing, I am not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. All right, could I please ask Jerry to go ahead and mute, please? Thank you so much. Okay, I'm seeing no further comment. I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public and open it up for commission discussion. Mr. Clifford?
I have no comments at this time or no, no questions for the applicant.
Okay, can you make the findings to approve?
Yes, I can.
Okay, and what is your thought on the five-year timeframe?
Well, we cannot, we cannot enforce the CCNRs.
You're right, I mean, the CCNRs, right, and I know exactly what you're talking about, but the CCNRs. It's, it's actually a separate thing from that.
Correct, and that's where the people in. I believe this one is in unit four. That's where they would have to go to their homeowners association. We are just looking at the property and yes, I can, I, I can justify five years to build a house there.
Okay, so you can make the findings and you are in support of adding condition number four with a five-year timeframe?
Condition number five would be a five-year timeframe on the CUP. We already, we have the four findings of facts, which I can make. And add number five, which would add the five-year timeframe to the CUP.
Okay, okay, thank you, Commissioner Clifford. Commissioner Best?
I can make the findings and I think five years is reasonable.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles?
I'd like to say that the. Five-year time period is a reasonable time period, considering all of the circumstances. Second thing is, I can make the findings, no problem there. The other thing, I'd like to commend the applicants for coming forward and actually applying for the use permit. I know how this works in areas, a lot of areas in the county. And a lot of people don't do this. It is far better to have someone come in. And put in the application for the use permit. It satisfies the county's zoning requirements, but it also addresses the problems that you can have. In dealing with, how do you deal with wastewater? They're going to have to have a septic system to meet this requirement eventually. We know what's going on and it protects everyone else with respect to that, so. That's it for my comments.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Williams?
I can make the findings. I really like the trailer. I would like to have it myself. And I think the applicants. Will do a really good job with whatever they end up doing, and I think the five years is fine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Walters?
I can make the findings and I agree with the five years.
Okay, um, this is Chair Ontiveris. I can also make the findings. And I think that the applicants are moving forward in a very good faith manner. I can support the five years. And looking at the staff report, I am showing that there are only three recommended conditions. And that this would be condition number four, rather than condition number five. Mr. Clifford, are you seeing the same thing?
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at it right now on my screen. We have. Findings of the staff, findings of fact required to approve the conditional use permit. Number one, that the proposed location of the conditional use permit is in accordance with the. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And that is number one. Number two, the location, which would be.
Okay, okay.
Three, four, and I have.
Go down to where it says recommended conditions of approval. It's at the bottom of page twenty-five. And then it's. All right, excuse me, on page seven of seven at the beginning, there's only three.
Yep, yes, there is. I'm sorry, my pages are backwards.
Okay, no, you're good. I just wanted to be sure that you weren't seeing something I wasn't. So, with that said, I think we're ready to move. Motion, please.
Okay, since I'm open, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve CUP. Twenty dash zero one seven with the four findings. Adding number four as a five-year timeframe on the CUP.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yes, you do. I will second that.
Okay, I've got a motion from Commissioner Clifford, a second from Commissioner Ruggles. For approval of CUP twenty dash zero one seven with the three recommended conditions, adding condition number four. With a term limit of five years to expire on nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-five. All of those in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Okay, and Chair Ontiveris, I also vote aye. This motion passes unanimously and this CUP is approved. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is case number CUP twenty dash zero one nine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, this case is the Redding RV as a residency, P twenty point, zero point one nine. In this case, the owner of the property is Daisy and Bonnie Redding in Flagstaff, Arizona. The applicant is Bonnie Redding, also Flagstaff. And the location of the property is at one-zero-four-eight East Walnut Road in Williams, Arizona. That's actually in the Valley area, as I'll show you in a minute. The zoning is agricultural residential, AR one acre minimum parcel size. And the parcel size is one point zero three acres. The request is to use an RV as a permanent residence. And this is a vicinity map showing the subject property. As you can see, the Valley Airport is right there. This is Highway one-eighty as it comes up and intersects with Highway sixty-four in Valley. And this is a aerial photo of the subject property. It is in a very undeveloped area of Valley. Lowell Drive is actually a road. But Walnut Road here is really not a road at all. But it is a right-of-way. As you may know, Valley has many right-of-ways without developed roads. The proposal is the applicant plans to use the existing systems on the RV for portable water and wastewater. The long-term plan is to buy or construct a permanent residence on the property. An additional thing they would like to do is to install an eight-by-twenty shipping container. To be used for storage on the site. That is not part of the CUP that is approved as an administrative permit by, by planning zoning staff. This is a site plan showing the subject property. You can see Walnut Road up on to the north side. And the blue item on here is the RV and the red item is the shipping container. And the applicant has already got a temporary use permit and has installed the RV or it has parked the RV on the property. And set it up there for, with a hundred-and-twenty-day permit. And this is a couple of pictures of the property and the RV. In terms of citizen participation, property owners if they interfere with the subject property are notified of the proposal on April seventeenth, twenty-twenty. There was not, at this point, there was not a requirement for any kind of public meeting. Not even a virtual meeting, because as you can see, the date, April seventeenth, is right in the middle of, right when the pandemic started. So we just required them to just notify property owners. The applicant has not received any correspondence from other landowners and neither has staff. Staff has not received any comments on this application at all. And these are the findings of fact for conditional use permit, which I have addressed in the staff report. And with that, staff recommends approval of CUP twenty dash zero one nine with the four recommended conditions. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yes, one relative to our last discussion. Did the applicant say anything about eventually building a home there? Or just using the RV as a permanent residence?
Yes, they do intend to either build a home or they may, they may purchase a manufactured home. This is a AR zone, which allows manufactured homes, so they could do either one of those things. But that is their long-term plan, to create, to set up a permanent residence on the property that's not, not an RV.
Just, just curious, really, based on our last discussion. Because the last discussion sort of set a precedent. But. Looks to me like we'll, we'll address anything like the, the time limit on the CUP during the commission discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ruggles. And I, and I would like to say that typically, we haven't had a time limit on these. Although, you know, it is something that certainly the commission could consider. I think in the, in the last case, that was a little bit different of a situation. We haven't had that situation before with RVs like this.
Hey, well, thank you very much for the additional comment. And I realize that these are situational. So it depends on the location, the surroundings, surrounding neighbors, surrounding properties. So that's the consideration, I guess, the way that I will look at it in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Are there any other commissioners that have questions? Okay, I am not seeing any. So thank you, Mr. Short. And I would now like to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative is available to address the commission?
Yes, Bonnie Redding is here.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record. And let me ask if you have read the staff report and if you agree with the conditions that it contains.
Okay, Bonnie Redding, B O N N I E R E D D I N G, twenty-four-hundred North Postal Boulevard. Number thirty-one, four oh four, Flagstaff, Arizona, eight-six-zero-zero-three. I have read it and I do agree with it. I did ask for just a four-year term on this CUP. I figure by that time I would know if I can make it out here or if I'm going to go back to Flagstaff. And I do intend on setting up a septic system for the permanent structure. But not for the RV. I'm just going to have it emptied as needed. And I can't remember, did I answer all the questions that you had for me, Madam Chair?
Yes, yes, you did. Thank you. And if you, if you don't have anything further. On, I think you've answered everything. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Ms. Redding? Okay, Ms. Redding, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to go ahead and open it up and see if any, anyone from the public wishes to speak. So thank you very much.
Welcome.
And with that, is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? Okay, Mr. McNeeley, I'm not seeing anyone. Are you?
Likewise, Madam Chair, I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay, thank you. Then I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public and open it to the commission. Commissioner Clifford, your, your comments?
I can make the findings to approve it.
Okay.
With the four recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Best?
It seems like a reasonable project. I can make the finding.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruggles?
I also can make the findings and just since I brought it up. I can see no need to even discuss a time limit on the CUP for this. So.
Okay.
Ready to go forward.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles, because I, for answering the question I was going to ask you. So thank you for that. Commissioner Williams?
I can make the findings and am in support of the CUP.
Thank you. Commissioner Walters?
I can make the findings.
Okay, thank you. And this is Chair Ontiveris. I can also make the findings and support this. So with that, can I please have a motion?
Okay, I'll go forward with this. I move for approval of CUP twenty dash zero one nine with conditions as stated by staff in the analysis.
I'll second that.
Okay, I've got a motion. Commissioner Ruggles, a second by Commissioner Clifford, approval of CUP zero one nine with conditions as stated. Favor, please say aye. Commissioner?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
And Chair Ontiveris also that vote aye. The motion passes unanimously and CUP twenty dash zero one nine is approved. Thank you. Third item on the agenda is case number ZC two zero dash zero zero nine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Zach Schwartz with the Planning and Zoning Division. And we are looking at case number ZC twenty zero zero nine. It's a zone change request from the G General Zone, which is typically a ten acre minimum zone to the RR five rural residential with a five acre minimum zone. And the subject property is located at fifty six eighty Bayside Road. This is west of city of Flagstaff municipal boundary on West sixty six. So you can see, whoops, let me just go back here. Here's Route sixty six, here's I forty, and we're just south of those here, west of the city of Flagstaff boundaries. This is the subject property. So you can see there is some other G general zone in the area, but directly adjacent to the west. There is RR three and then RR seven zones. So this request is somewhat similar to those. There are homes on these two properties here. US Naval Observatory is right here. And we do have some open space, not too far, sort of south and west of the property. And here is an aerial photo of the property. This property is ten point four two acres. Again, it's in that G general zone. We have our applicant is Guy Eklund of Flagstaff and the owner is Craig Hindman or Heineman. I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong of Flagstaff. I guess I just wanted to explain this really quick. Here's an existing home on the property. And the applicant is looking to sort of get this zone changed so that they'll have a lower minimum parcel size so that they can split the property right here, sort of. And then have another home here. They're looking to do this because Mr. Heineman is looking to have his brother live in a home on the property, but he doesn't meet the accessory dwelling unit requirements. So that's where you have to split the property as the applicant has shown us in the survey here. Right down the line, they would sort of continue down this existing dirt drive for an access easement here to the new parcel. And I'll speak a little bit more about this rectangle or square that you see right here. But for some background, sorry, so an important part of the analysis for this case is that there is a wildlife corridor in the area. Which is why the applicant has agreed to, in the survey for this, when they want to split this property, have just a building envelope where nothing else would be built outside of this area. Because there are, there is an attached letter from our urban wildlife planner identifying that this area in general, so you can see that everything in this sort of dotted area is a wildlife corridor. And this is a very popular wildlife corridor. Where animals are sort of crossing the forty. This black square right here is the subject property. And the urban wildlife planner, having gone and looked at the site, actually one of our commissioners as well, noted that probably this sort of eastern portion of the property to be created from the split is where animals would most likely pass through. So the applicant was willing to create this building envelope in order to sort of mitigate the wildlife impact. The other sort of issue that's important for this case is the dark skies impact. So the US Naval Observatory is located approximately one half mile southeast of the subject property and density increases can sometimes affect the amount of lighting that's permitted and then therefore have an impact on the mission of the nearby observatories. But a representative from the Naval Observatory was present in the pre-application for this request. And they thought one extra home site would not be that much of an additional burden. And they felt like that at this case being approved would not have any sort of negative effect on the observatory or on dark skies in general. And if approved, then both home sites would need to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, section four point three for lighting zone one. Which is obviously the most restrictive lighting ordinance considering the proximity to the observatory. As far as long range plan compliance, so this area is within obviously a Coconial County Comprehensive Plan, but it's also within the Flagstaff Regional Plan boundaries. So this is a map from the Flagstaff Regional Plan. And the subject property is right here. You can probably barely make out, but that color is represented with a rural density designation, which the comprehensive, or sorry, the Regional Plan explains as density as low as one acre or one home per one acre or one home per ten units or ten acres. So this meets that. The request meets the density that is laid out in the Regional Plan. And as far as the Comprehensive Plan, I have laid out some relevant goals and policies from that in the staff report. But just to summarize, there are six policies that call for preservation of wildlife corridors, which the applicant has gone to extra lengths creating that building envelope to protect and four policies that called for continued conservation of dark skies. And as we just discussed, this request wouldn't have any negative effect on that. As the commission knows, there are three findings of fact that have to be made for approval of the zone change request. And I've gone through staff's making of the findings. For this case, staff's able to make all those findings. And if the commission is able to make all the, all the required findings of fact, staff is recommending approval of case ZC twenty zero zero nine, subject to the two conditions in the staff report. And I'm happy to take any questions from the commission at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. I'm not seeing any of the commissioners unmuting. So I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and assume that there are no questions from the commissioners. With that, I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would please address the commission? And also, I would like to ask if you have read the staff report and if you agree with the recommended conditions. And with that, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Tony Cullum, fourteen East Dale, Flagstaff. I'm the attorney for Craig Heineman, who's sitting just to my left. I have Guy Eklund to my right. The short version is, we, we approve everything. You've done a wonderful job. We have no problems with any of it. We'd like to have a few thanks. First of all, County Planner Zachary Schwartz did a wonderful job. Second of all, to the Navy Observatory who walked the property with us numerous times. Stephen Williams was our appointed designee. We've got some real strong CC and Rs taking care of all of their concerns. Third, the Arizona Game and Fish Department walked the property with us, came up with some great ideas. Jessica Simmons really worked with us. And we'd also like to thank Commissioner Best, who lined up the game and fish, worked with us and did a wonderful job making this a great wildlife corridor for this property and, and the properties to come. And it's tied with the land in perpetuity. Also, the Pandrosa Fire Department, the fire chief worked with us, worked the property, worked with the neighbors, or basically two other neighbors. And ended up with a annexation into the fire district. We're working for grants for tree thinning. And anyways, it's working very well. The two neighbors, we have a letter of support in the file from Gordon Diane Medford, and we also have a letter of support in the file from James Zanzuki. So we appreciate being able to be here and we're in favor of everything and we think this will walk right on through. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cullum. Do the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Cullum at this time? Okay, I am not seeing any. Thank you, Mr. Cullum. I'm going to go ahead and ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? Okay, and I am not seeing any, Mr. McNeely or you. I just want to be sure I don't miss anyone from the public.
Madam Chair, I am not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public and open it up for commission discussion. Commissioner Clifford?
I can make the findings for approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Best? Commissioner Best, are you there?
So Commissioner Best, we are seeing you as muted. You're going to need to unmute yourself.
Okay, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go to Commissioner Ruggles. And then we're going to come back. I'll go ahead and go through the other commissioners and then we will come back to Commissioner Best for his comments. So Commissioner Best, if you can hear us, please unmute and we will come back to you. Commissioner Ruggles?
Okay, I can make the findings for this. And I think the case has been extremely well managed. So my thanks go to everyone concerned. And I know that Tony and Guy have done a terrific job in representing their client on this as always. So thanks again to you guys.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Williams?
I can make the findings and I'm in support of the CUP.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Walters?
I can make the findings.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to circle back to Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Best, you're up.
Madam Chair, sorry, I got lost in Zoom land here and couldn't unmute, but I can make the findings.
Okay, thank you. And, and I, and I completely understand getting lost in Zoom land. So yeah, no, no judgment here. This is Chair Ontiveris and I also can make the findings and I very much concur with the comments that were spoken by Commissioner Ruggles. A great job by everybody. And I would just like to thank the applicant for being willing to really just limit the, the building envelope to where it is for the, really for the sake of the wildlife. And thank you for your cooperation in this. And I think it's going to be a great project. So with that, we're going to go ahead and move to a motion, please.
Okay, I'll be happy to speak up here. I'd like to move for approval of case number ZC dash twenty dash zero zero nine with conditions as written by staff in the analysis.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Williams for approval of it's a recommendation to the board for approval of ZC two zero dash zero zero nine. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
This is Chair Ontiveris and I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously for approval to the Board of Supervisors for ZC two zero dash zero zero nine. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is case number ZC dash two zero dash zero one one and SUB two zero dash zero one one.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. This case is the Kachina Highlands Zone Change and preliminary subdivision plat. The application, the applicant in this case is, I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me, the owners of this property is Kachina thirty six, number one LLC of Tempe, Arizona. The applicant is CDini, Civil Design and Engineering of Flagstaff, Arizona. And the representative from that company is Ian Braun, also of Flagstaff. The developer is the Arcadia Capital Group from Scottsdale, Arizona. Location of the subdivision is in the far northeast corner of Kachina Village and is right off of Tovar Road, although there is not currently an access to the property. The current zoning is conditional, actually, but it's RS six thousand. Size of the parcels of the property, including four parcels, is forty point one acres. And this is a request for a zone change from RS six thousand to plan community with modified RM ten A standards applied. And it also includes approval of a master development plan. And this is a vicinity map showing the subject property. You can see Kachina Village down in this area. Forest Highlands over here with all the golf car, golf courses and mountain air down here. And it's right in that upper corner of Kachina Village, right along the interstate. Includes a few lots that go back down to a tow bar trail. And this is a, this, this is actually the aerial photo showing the subject properties. You can see those four parcels that will be used for access and the main body of the lot back here. This is around, this area is MHP zone. And this area right here is part of the MHP or a manufactured home park. And then right along this portion, you know, are four individual lots with manufactured homes also in the manufactured home zone. I'm going to go back and look at some backgrounds, some quick background on this property. Many of you commissioners have been here through all of this. Originally, the Kachina Village North preliminary plat was submitted in two thousand eight. That took a couple of years to get passed and was finally passed in two thousand eleven. In two thousand sixteen, the owner came back with an amendment to, to that, that particular subdivision, and that was SUB sixteen zero zero one. That was approved. However, that was allowed to lapse and the applicant was required to come back again and get that reapproved. And that was reapproved through SUB eighteen zero zero two. Those two, the SUB eighteen zero zero two and SUB sixteen zero zero one were exactly the same. There weren't any changes between those two subdivisions. And now in two thousand twenty, we have the current request, of course. I want to show you some pictures to start out of the, of the property. And this is, is some topography, some rock formations that are on the property. And the road would go right, right to this side, to the right side of these rocks. It goes through two rock formations as it, as it goes back to the main body of the subdivision. And this is the area at the back of the subdivision. As you get back into the larger lot back there, it's right on I seventeen. There's a steep slope that falls down to I seventeen. And a lot of this, in this particular proposal, this is a change to the old proposal. This would be mostly open space back here, kind of a nice place for the people that live in the subdivision to come and, you know, visit, have picnics or whatever. There's a nice corridor into here. And I wanted to also point out that as the subdivision starts. And I wanted to also point out that as the subdivision starts with quite a bit of topography and a couple of springs that we'll talk about, but as you get back into the back of the subdivision, it is open. It is wide open. There's not really any kind of washer gully to go with the springs. It's just a big wide open space that's actually very good for development of residential housing. And I also want you to note that there has been a thinning of this property. So the trees are, this area has been treated to prevent forest fires. And this is on the south property line, sort of southwest property line. And these are, I believe, they, these are the lots. These are actually manufactured homes on individual lots. So this is the local neighborhood right here. I wanna talk about the development proposal. The original subdivision was a hundred and thirty lots, and this is a hundred and seventy-three. So it is quite a bit of an increase in density. It's also an increase in open space from seventeen percent to thirty-one percent. And I should note that in the planned community zone, they are required to have thirty percent open space. So that's part of the reason for this. This one, it does have some traditional housing, but also some smaller housing units and also some what they call paired housing or duplexes. The lots in this case ranged from thirty to fifty square feet in a smaller area, smaller lot area, neighborhood in this subdivision, up to nine thousand four hundred and seventy-four square feet. Housing ranges from thirteen fifty square feet to three thousand square feet in size. So it does have some smaller homes, but also some larger homes as well. Now, this is an interesting aspect of this subdivision. They are requesting, or they're, what we call, what they call use and benefit easements. And I'm not gonna try to explain that too much at this point. The applicant probably did a better job than I could. But the UBE basically provides for adjacent properties to use this easement as part of their yard, allowing for the development of side yard houses. As you know, if you have lots in a subdivision, typically you'd have five foot setbacks on each side. What this does is basically put those two together to make one ten foot setback to create a small yard, and I'll show you more about that later. In this case, all the streets are private. This is a big change from the last subdivision, based on some of county's policies that does make it more difficult to create public streets. They're also proposing roundabouts for more efficient circulation, and I'll show you how that works in a second. There is a multimodal path that goes through the middle of the subdivision and also trails that connect to that path and back to the National Forest and out to Towar Trail. This, the main trail here, the main multimodal trail, and the path, the trail that goes in the middle, that I'll show you in a minute, that will be contained within a, an easement, a thirty foot wide easement, or an easement that varies in size depending on the situation. And that will be dedicated to the park, to the County Parks and Recreation Department, and they will maintain that trail. So the subdivision will retain public access for these trails and their connection back to the forest. Open spaces provided in the subdivision for many different reasons. Wildlife corridors, stormwater detention, secondary access, public utilities, parks, and also mail facilities. And this is the master development plan for the subdivision. As many of you will note, the access road has not changed very much. This is the access road over here, comes into the subdivision this way. I did want to note that because of these roundabouts, it creates a lot better circulation. Under the previous plan, traffic would come into the subdivision, would be required to go all the way around here to this side. Or there was, I think, a cross through here possibly. But what this does is it takes the impacts off of these neighborhoods in this areas because a lot less traffic has to travel through here to get back to other parts. So the roundabouts allow you to go this way. Or when you go to this one, you can go back to the west or up to this neighborhood. So it does provide a lot better circulation. And I'll look at this in a little bit more detail later, but this is the trail that comes in from Towar Trail. And this is a multi-use paved path. It turns to a foot standard trail as it goes through the middle of the subdivision. These are some picnic facilities right here. There's also a mail facility here with parking for that, and I believe even some turf areas. The commission did talk about wildlife. This is a wildlife corridor as well. It's a hundred feet wide minimum as it goes through here. And there was some discussion about removing this stuff so the wildlife would not, you know, be hindered from going through here. We had some further discussions with the Arizona Game and Fish Department, also with the Wildlife Planner. And the indication was that large wildlife like elk probably wouldn't come here anyway after this development came in because it is, you know, it's quite a development that would dissuade them from coming in, although small game would continue to come through here, probably deer, probably not elk. So at this point, the developer, the applicant, is requesting to retain that as an amenity for the people that live in the subdivision. And these are the cross sections. Commissioners who were here before will note that they are exactly the same as the cross sections before. This is the main access road into the subdivision. It has twenty-four foot, excuse me, two twelve foot travel lanes and four foot paved shoulders on each side. It does not have any sidewalks. The sidewalk, it would be this eight foot multimodal path that is away from the traffic. It's a good design for pedestrians. No parking would be allowed on this area, on this particular access road coming into the subdivision. This is the layout for the roads in the subdivision. They are also two twelve foot travel lanes without the shoulder. And there is four foot sidewalks on one side proposed in this case. I have included a condition that parking can be allowed on one side of these streets, but not on both sides. I had discussions with the fire district, and they indicated that, you know, it's pretty obvious with the twenty-four foot wide lanes that if two cars are parked on each side, that a fire truck could not get through between that. So parking would be allowed on one side. And I wanted to show you the close up of the proposed lots. These are the duplex lots, and so they would have, they would be obviously a duplex. But there would be a property line in the middle so that you could own these individually, these units is basically attached. Single-family housing. And this is a more typical lot, or standard five thousand square foot lot in a suburban area. And then these are the very tiny lots. And note that there is a five foot UBE, use and benefits easement on each side here that would allow for wider side yard houses. The applicant has told me that they would probably remove that from the duplex lots because it just doesn't work. Excuse me while I take a drink there. Okay, I wanna talk about the springs on the property. There are two springs on the property. They're called, they're called Upper and Middle Towar Springs, and they have been determined to be jurisdictional waters of the United States back in two thousand twelve, and they have associated wetlands with them. For Upper Towar Springs, the applicant is proposing an arch crossing with a bottomless culvert. And that does allow protection of the springs. For the Middle Towar Spring, it would skirt the wetlands. The road would skirt the wetlands and be on above a retaining wall that's fifteen foot high. And I'll show you how that works in a second here. The applicant will dedicate the open space tracks containing the springs to the county for maintenance by the County Parks and Recreation Department. I did discuss that with the director, and she was in favor of doing that so they could protect the springs better. Okay, so this is a close up of that access road that comes in from Towar Trail. You can see Towar Trail here. And this is a shaded springs trail that would come in. This is our main access road. You can see the delineated wetlands area of Middle Towar Springs and the wall around that. And this would be the arch crossing. And these two tracks, A and B, would be dedicated to the county for maintenance. Sorry, my computer's moving very slowly suddenly. There it goes. This is a picture. This is a rendering of the proposed crossing of Upper Towar Springs. It is thirty feet wide. It is bottomless, as I said, and about twelve feet high. And potentially wildlife would go through. I'm sure a lot of small wildlife, would even maybe deer, probably not elk, but maybe deer would cross through here. And this is Middle Towar Springs. This is taken, the picture is taken about from the location where the retaining wall would go up, and the road would be above it, but it would totally miss this wetland area. This is recently taken. We've had a very dry summer, and there is definitely water here. And this is Upper Towar Springs. This is just about the location where that arch crossing would be. These are the proposed standards for the subdivision. Basically, one of the ways that, it's been kind of a tradition at the county that whenever one of these plant developments comes in, they pick a zone just to make it easier. They pick a zone and then they modify the standards to fit their subdivision. And this one is quite unique. It's a different kind of development, certainly. As you can see on that first line, the density is ten units per acre. However, the actual density is four point three one units per acre because there's so much open space. The smallest lots, again, would be thirty-two hundred square feet. That is pretty small. One of the unique features in this subdivision is that they have ten foot front setbacks. So that creates quite a bit of something that, you know, you may not be used to. We're used to like twenty foot setbacks. This creates a different type of development, but certainly one that would, you know, has its place. And some of the other setbacks are basically the same. You can look at some of the, some of the setbacks for assessing structures are a little bit shorter, but that's kind of consistent with our regular zoning ordinance, setbacks for most zones. And then I also wanted to point out, this is a pretty high lot coverage. Maximum sixty percent is actually pretty high. Thirty-five percent is a standard height for developments, for zones. All of the, by the way, all of the items that have stars next to them, those are all changes to the RM ten A standards. Okay, I wanted to talk about traffic impacts, obviously. This subdivision would produce some traffic. So the applicant estimated a preliminary traffic impact analysis, and it does conclude that a right-hand turn lane would be acquired from Towar Trail into the subdivision. So that is something that's already on their master development plan and something they plan to install. There will be a final TIA that would be required, and any improvements identified would be completed by the applicant. We do have members of our public work staff here, including the county engineer who can answer questions about transportation if the commission has those. And I wanted to go over the findings of the TIA. It will, this development certainly will increase traffic on Towar Trail by quite a bit, and we can talk about those numbers later. It also increases the number of left turns at the intersection of Towar Trail and Kachina Boulevard during peak hours. However, that would remain, that intersection would remain at level of service A, which is kind of the highest level. That would not change the level of service at that intersection. It also increases traffic on the northbound ramp onto I seventeen during peak hours. And you can imagine if there's more people coming down and making that left-hand turn and getting on the northbound ramp to go back up to Flagstaff for work, that this would impact that. It does reduce that level of service from D to E. So it does certainly take that level of service down. In terms of citizen participation, the applicant held an online virtual neighborhood meeting on July tenth, two thousand twenty. That was intended by, attended by five neighbors. I have included the minutes from that meeting, which are quite extensive, actually, in the commission packet. Because of the potential traffic impacts to Kachina Village, to the entire community, staff did determine that it would be a good idea to notify all properties in Kachina Village. This is something that we have not done very often, I will say. There are thirteen, there were thirteen hundred and eighty-eight notices sent out notifying property owners in Kachina Village of this hearing. Staff has documented nineteen comments on this proposal. And that is comments of every kind. I think comments from the applicant, as well as comments that we've received primarily through email. And I wanted to talk about some of the concerns that were expressed. The first one is impacts caused by increased traffic, of course. Environmental impacts on the springs, wetlands, and wildlife. The increased density and incompatibility with Kachina Village because of its small lot size is something that's addressed in the Kachina Village area plan. I'll look at this in a minute. Also, there's quite a bit of concern about increased fire danger and the difficulty of evacuating the community. There is an emergency access for this subdivision. But the idea that if there was a fire and a lot of cars had to leave at once, that was a concern that was expressed by some of the neighbors, people from Kachina Village. And also impacts to water and sewer capacity on Kachina Village Improvement District, that's KVID. They have indicated they do have capacity for this subdivision and development. And the last thing, I mean, not the last thing, but I did want to talk about conditional zoning. Conditional zoning is something that's allowed in our zoning ordinance. And what it does is it allows the Board of Supervisors to change the zone on a property conditionally based on the schedule of development for a specific use. In this case, if this zone change is approved by the Board of Supervisors, the applicant is approved to use it exactly as you have seen tonight and no other way. That's the only way that this would be able to be developed. What it does, though, is it provides for properties to revert back to their original zoning if the development does not occur within a certain amount of time. And in this case, there is a condition in the staff report that provides for five years for the applicant to obtain final plat approval on the subdivision, or it goes back to the board, excuse me? Or it goes back to the board for it is at that point, if if the final plat is not approved within five years, it goes back to the board for a hearing and the board has several different choices whether they would like to provide an extension or change that revert the zoning back to the original zone. There are several different choices at that point. I will say that for this current conditional zoning on the property that is there now, it has had several extensions to that zoning. Approved by the board of supervisors. So basically, conditional zoning approval is currently in effect on the properties, providing for the property to revert to the original Z G zone. If a final plat is not approved for S U B eighteen zero zero two. So right now, there is a conditional zoning approved on this property. The commission approved that back in two thousand eighteen. And I think the point here is that if this subdivision didn't go through, then it would revert back to the G zoning rather than the R S six thousand at that point. And we can talk about that more if you have questions. I know that was a little little complicated. In terms of findings, is the findings for a zone change? I have addressed those in the staff report. We can talk about any of those. I wanted to point out some of the policies policies in the comprehensive plan that I have in the staff report. For example, protection of surface water and groundwater quality is important. Obviously, that's being addressed in the subdivision, but also a concern. The county encourages the design of subdivisions that protect environmentally sensitive features and special characteristics of the property. Obviously, there are some environmental features on here in terms of the springs. There is adequate emergency services. And there is an emergency access route out of the subdivision. The subdivision also provides for trails throughout the subdivision according to this policy as well, consistent with this policy. And I wanted to look at the Kachina Village area plan as well. The county encourages for preservation of and restoration of natural wetlands, floodplains, repairing areas, distinctive landscape features and environmentally sensitive lands. The applicant has worked to do that as best they can in this case. Developments are meant to minimize alterations to natural landforms. The applicant has put the roadway between some of the rock formations. The this is a policy that talks about protecting downstream ecosystems like Pump House Wash and Oak Creek. And in this case, the springs are being protected and maintained by the county, so it will protect those downstream ecosystems. There they are providing for a wildlife corridor to protect, to help protect wildlife habitat. And they have determined there's an adequate water supply from K V I D. And these are some policies from the Kachina Village area plan related to housing. It says new residential subdivisions shall include building lots that are comparable in size to the established development pattern of Kachina Village. And this is certainly something I've gotten some comments on from some of the neighbors in Kachina Village that indicated that these lots were too small. Were smaller than what is in Kachina Village, and that certainly is a viable argument, although they do provide single family housing. And it does create its own little neighborhood kind of tucked away up in North Kachina Village. These are these are the findings for a preliminary plat. I've addressed those as well in the staff report. And with that, if the commission can make the finding staff recommends the commission forwards a recommendation to the board of supervisors to approve Z C twenty zero one one and S U B twenty zero one one with the proposed conditions. And I want to point out, this does require two separate motions, one for the zone change to planned community and one for the preliminary subdivision plat. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Mr. Short, Commissioner Best here. I believe that there is a fence around the open space. Is that correct? Between the backyards of the houses on the open space?
Yes, the the applicant has let me know that they will have a consistent type of fencing. I believe that's what you're referring to. There will be a consistent type of fencing in the for the open space in the front and I'm I'm I imagine in the back as well. They were definitely not going to leave that open, you know, just as open housings allow people to build their own fences because you'd like to get a hodgepodge of fencing and it wouldn't be good for wildlife either. You know, they would avoid the area more without that fencing that creates a corridor through there.
My point exactly. And that fence would be main maintained by the by the organization, correct?
I that would be a question for the applicant. I I'm not sure if they would have individual property owners maintain fences. That's kind of typical. Or the H O A would. That would be a question that the applicant might be able to address.
Okay. So so we have some traffic analysis, and maybe this is a question for counsel. And some of the traffic analysis is coming after our decision. Are we to make that part of our decision? Or is that because it because there is a formal analysis, is that outside of our purview?
Commissioner Best, I I I believe that would be there. And I and I apologize, I probably didn't. I didn't have any of those in the staff report, but there certainly are policies based on traffic impacts in the comprehensive plan. So that is something you can base your decision on. On the other hand, they what we typically have with these transportation impact analyses is that whatever is determined to be needed in terms of, you know, from those that that will be provided by the applicant. So one way or another, they have provided a preliminary traffic impact analysis. They have determined that they do need a right hand turn lane. That's an off offside improvement, right, for the subdivision. As they look at this further, as our Public Works Department, our transportation planner, and actually A dot, as they look at this further and in require additional studies, they may determine that other improvements are needed and will be will need to be made by the applicant. So there is definitely a condition, there's a condition in staff report that says that will happen. So that is something one way or another, if more offside improvements are determined to be needed by traffic studies, then those will be done.
And it well, but in the case of the the northbound ramp, there's no way we're going to make another northbound ramp. Could you explain level of service D to E? Is there anything worse than E?
You know, that's something I I've I have a layman's understanding of those level of service ideas, but I would defer to I believe our county engineers here, also our engineering supervisor. I believe the transportation planner is here as well. So I would defer those questions to them.
Okay, and at at what point shall we do that?
I I think that would be fine. Chris, Chris or John, did you guys like to answer that question?
Yes, level of service E would be considered the worst.
Level of service E is the worst. So and and what would that mean? Does that become an unsafe situation? Is that a matter of delays? We're trying to put a lot of cars onto a highway, people going at highway speeds.
Go ahead, Christopher.
Hey, so I I just didn't catch who was talking before. Was that John Carr, the engineering supervisor?
Yes.
All right. So an acceptable level of traffic would potentially be a level E. However, there is a level F. And and A dot prefers that we don't go below a level C. I think what there's a it's interesting traffic report telling us that it's northbound off ramp traffic that's impeded. And it drops to a level service E in this case. And so we're a we're not sure. You know, and this is part of further traffic analysis that can be done. But you know, who's coming to Kachina Village first thing in the morning when traffic, when a lot of people are leaving Kachina Village? And and so I think the the applicant has done a good job with their initial scoping and identified a few things. And so that's and and so this is something, you know, you you pointed out that, you know, definitely be quite the lift for the applicant to have to build you know, potentially, you know, these pretty extensive improvements to increase that level of service. But there's other creative things that potentially could happen. I don't necessarily have all of those scoped. We don't have those scoped at this time. But, you know, we're gonna expect that the applicant address any safety issues or a level of service issues that that this this development creates. And so the the other part, level of service A for Tovar Trail, where the where the vehicles come in and merge with Kachina Boulevard. Tim Delagowski, our transportation planners here. Tim, do you want to talk about for us? What what that level of service currently is and and what it means to that it's going to be maintained in A, but then also you might talk about what we've seen historically with with complaints and resident concerns in that area.
Have Tim. Okay, finally got it unmuted. Sorry about that. Okay. All right, I'm Tim Dalgowski, transportation planner. Yes, when we are looking at level of service, what that defines is the amount of wait time for a vehicle to move through the intersection. And so there's level A, B, C, D, E and F. And each one of those has a specific timeframe assigned to it per vehicle to determine what the level of service is for that intersection. The current level of service at the intersection of Tovar and Kachina Boulevard is currently level of service A. There's virtually no waiting at that stop sign to turn on to Kachina Boulevard even during rush hour. Level of service A means that a vehicle can wait up to ten seconds per vehicle that stacked at that intersection. If you have two vehicles stacked at the intersection, you would expect level of service A to allow those vehicles to move within twenty seconds, ten seconds per vehicle. And as you move on down the list, level B and C and D and E and F, those wait times increase. So the applicant or the developer has through the T I A has indicated that the level of service at the Tovar Kachina Boulevard intersection, it will remain at level of service A. Right now, their T I A states that there's virtually no waiting per vehicle when they reach that intersection. However, when we add the traffic from this subdivision to that intersection, the wait time becomes about seven and a half seconds per vehicle, which falls within the ten seconds per vehicle prescribed in level of service A. So the level of service remains at level, level of service A at that intersection, even with the additional traffic. However, level of service does not address safety. And we were a little concerned when we saw the number of left turns during the what we call peak hour. That's the morning rush hour and the afternoon rush hour during those peak hours that the number of left turns were getting close to a hundred. There are about ninety five left turns being at that intersection during the morning rush hour. And what the concern was, but even though it's remaining at level of service A, there may be people who become impatient because they're having to wait ten seconds or seven and a half seconds per vehicle. If you if you get up to the intersection and there's ten vehicles there and each one of them is waiting seven and a half seconds, then you're looking at over a minute wait before you even get to the intersection. Now, that doesn't sound like a lot. But if you just try to hold your breath for a minute or if you sit in one spot and wait for a signal to change for one minute, it seems like a long time. And that may encourage people to take unnecessary risks to enter the intersection before the intersection is cleared. So there we would like to see some further analysis analysis on what the safety impacts are going to be from all all of these left turns. Yes, the level of service remains at A, but we, when you're mixing left turns into traffic going both directions, and then we have a gas station across the street that could potentially expand. That could add turning movements. You you add in a lot more conflict points or or opportunities for accidents. And those accidents could be severe based upon the number of vehicles, the speeds that they're going and the in the type of movements that they're making. So we would like to look at some further analysis at that intersection to see what could be done to make the intersection safer and not focus just on the level of service. And to carry this forward to the the interchange on I seventeen. The traffic that's coming north on I seventeen and exits to go to Kachina Boulevard. There may only be one or two of those vehicles maybe per hour. Okay, but when you add a significant amount of more traffic that's coming from Kachina Village and then turning north to get on I seventeen, it makes those vehicles wait longer because there's more traffic that's that has the right of way to turn left to go north on I seventeen and the 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 northbound off ramp of I seventeen would have to wait for those vehicles to clear. That's why that level of service is so low to begin with and why it drops from a level of service D to E. And we would be looking to A dot to determine what type of improvements would be needed to address that situation, whether it be a turn lane, an added, you know, like a dual left that goes on to I seventeen or whether it would be there would be some signals there. What we want to do is look to A dot to see what they would prefer there and and go from there. But our main concern is the intersection at Tovar and Kachina Boulevard where we have a lot more left turns entering Kachina Boulevard and the potential for a lot more accidents and possibly higher severity accidents. So that was what we were looking at in in regards to some improvements that might be made to make the intersection safer.
Is there room for a traffic circle there?
Well, and and you know, we have thought about that. The there isn't in its current with the current right of way, we would have, the county would have to purchase or someone would have to purchase the parcel to the west of Tovar there, where I think there's a small little house or or old office. I think it used to be the actually the village land shop old office there that still remains. That parcel would have to be purchased and then we would install a a modified roundabout elongated. You know, with numerous legs so that it could accommodate traffic from Tovar, Kachina Trail, Kachina Boulevard, a gas station and a frontage road. So that is under consideration for sure, roundabout.
Thank you very much.
It's a I'd like to answer one of the the questions that the commissioner had asked. Is that I think you're asking, does this need to be finalized before the commission? does this need to be finalized before the commission, uh, can approve this? And it's my understanding that at this stage, the applicant has addressed the level of engineering and the analysis that needs to be completed for a preliminary plat. And, uh, and so we are comfortable with, uh, we would be comfortable receiving, uh, you know, the commission's recommendation. And then, uh, moving forward, we'll continue, uh, with further engineering analysis and, uh, um, traffic studies and safety studies, uh, to address these concerns. Uh, Tim is a great traffic engineer and, uh, he's definitely looking at this, um, the different aspects of safety and level of service. And we'll continue to do that work with the applicant to make sure that this, uh, um, development doesn't, uh, increase a, a safety concern or a traffic issue.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair. This is Jamie. I speak?
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Christopher, thank you very much for that. And, uh, Tim, thank you for your input. Christopher's correct. Um, what has been submitted is a, a complete traffic impact analysis, um, which is actually above and beyond what would be required at this stage of the development. So Christopher's statement's, uh, 100% correct. I just wanted to validate that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Christelman. And I do appreciate the really in-depth and thorough explanation that has been given by, um, the individuals from engineering that just spoke. I think that helps the commissioners and is going to go a long way in this discussion. So thank you. Um, do, are there other commissioners that have any other additional questions for staff or the engineers or Mr. Christelman at this time? Okay, I am not seeing anyone. I do have a question and it may actually be more for Jessica Simmons, our wildlife planner. Um, the, the question that I have in the staff report, um, it talks about how you have found that the elk, um, activity has really decreased in this area in the Kachina Village area. Um, and that with this development, it's probably, there's probably not going to be much at all. Is, has the elk activity, can you tell us why the elk activity has decreased? And where, where the wildlife corridor is at now relative to this development?
Yeah. Hi, Chairwoman and Commissioners. Um, the, at the beginning, when I was first looking at this development, my concern was elk being able to reach the meadows just to the south at Pump House Wash. But upon talking to other county employees further, um, I found out that the elk have hardly been seen there in several years. So, uh, and when you look at the aerial view of Pump House Wash, it's basically completely closed off by development with this development would be the last piece, just sealing off that meadow. But like I said, it doesn't seem like the elk are using that meadow in the first place. So I don't think that this development would be blocking any elk movement. Uh, there was talk before, there was some concern about this development possibly pushing elk into the interstate and causing more accidents. And this is a, uh, stretch of interstate with higher than usual elk or wildlife collisions. Um, but I, I don't think that, uh, a lot of elk are moving through this parcel. And I did go visit it and I tried to look for elk sign, but there were so many pine needles on the ground, I couldn't tell anything. But, um, uh, sorry, what, what was the rest of your question?
Well, okay, actually following on your comments, it kind of begs the question, if there's not, if you're not seeing, or someone is not seeing a lot of elk activity, but yet this is a known wildlife collision area? What, what is happening here? Cause if we've got collisions on the roadway and we're saying this isn't it, are they using the roadway or where is the wildlife corridor at now? Has it been pushed into the I-17 area?
Yeah, that's an excellent question and that's possible that it has been. I have been trying to figure that out myself. Where could these elk and other animals possibly be going to, to be trying to cross the interstate at that area? And I do not, I was not able to find, to get my hands on data as of exactly where collisions are. So is it right exactly next to Kachina Village? Or are these collisions being seen in a broader, longer area of the interstate than exactly at Kachina Village? So I, I don't know if the elk or other animals are being hit, uh, exactly right in front of this parcel or exactly right next to Kachina Village, or if people are talking about more of say, a 10 mile stretch of the interstate or not. So I do know, for one, I don't know where those collisions are occurring exactly. And no, if, if they are being, if there are collisions and accidents occurring right next to Kachina Village, I, I can't figure out from looking at aerial photos and stuff where these animals are probably going since Kachina Village is basically completely developed. I don't know where they'd be trying to get to.
Okay, okay. So where does that then leave us as commissioners? When we try to determine if this is, um, adversely affecting that? It, it sounds like the more questions that we ask, you know what I mean? And, and of course, this is, um, I'm not sliding you in any way because obviously you're trying to, to get them. But it's kind of like the more questions that are asked, the more questions that are raised. Like, if it's not a wildlife corridor and it is a high collision area, I think we can put two and two together and say, there, there has to be some movement through here. What do we do? How do we get this question answered? Because this is only going to exacerbate that situation. Do you know where the elk are coming from?
No, and the, these are such good questions and I ask myself these exact same ones. Um, I, I don't know where they're going and, um, I, I don't know that this would exacerbate it because I don't know that elk are using this parcel and I don't know where these collisions are occurring. I feel like if we had more detailed collision data, maybe that would help answer the question, but I didn't have that for this analysis.
Okay, is that something that, um, is that, is this information something that is actually available? That someone could get there, that someone could obtain?
I would expect that A dot would have that data. And I
Okay.
found reports of collisions and, uh, they, they were just very more, more general areas, more, more like stretches of road. Not, it, I, it didn't have detail as far as collisions happened exactly right outside of this parcel or not.
Okay, okay. Um, do you think it might be a good idea to have, to have somebody get that information from A dot? Do you think it would play in to, um, we've already got, you know, a traffic study going on? We already know that there are real issues, okay, with traffic, et cetera. And I do believe that wildlife collision is yet another traffic issue. Do you think that getting that information and pulling that information into, um, this flow of traffic would be, would be pertinent?
Yeah, it may. Yeah, it would certainly inform, inform, uh, finding out what's going on here. Cause like I said, I, I do think it is kind of a mystery if there are so many collisions and I, I just don't see where they'd really be going. I'm looking again at the aerial right now, the satellite imagery. And if elk are trying to cross from the east to cross I-17 to head to the west, there's really just not a lot of open space for them that they would be able to reach on the west side of the interstate unless you had quite a ways, unless you had south of Kachina Village. So if the, the collisions are happening further down there, that would make sense that they're moving through. But it doesn't, I, I don't know why elk would be trying to cross right by this parcel.
Okay, okay. I think I, I think that, that I've probably exhausted, you know, what you're able to answer and I very much appreciate it. Um, and that's really all of the questions that I have. Do any of the other commissioners have any questions for staff at this time?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Best, um, if, if we could get more information on this, um, looking at the aerial photos, in a way, it looks like we don't want elk going through this land because there, there isn't a public land connection, uh, north, south here. And it would be better for the elk to be headed out west of Kachina Village. Uh, it, there's a, there's a parcel there that, uh, that blocks them all the way going up. So if we could get more information and find something that would mitigate, uh, the, the situation, maybe we could ask the applicant to, to help with that. It'd be good information to have.
Okay. Um, and, and I do concur with that. So let's go ahead and leave that there for now and we'll pick that back up. We'll circle back to this in, in commission discussion. And is there any other commissioners? I'm not seeing any that have questions at this time. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to address the commission, please.
I'm Chair. This is Ian Braun with CDNE. I just wanted to make sure before I start that everyone can hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Ian Braun, 618 East Route 66, 86005. Uh, I want to thank you. Thank you. Thank the commission for their time. I want to thank staff for their time. I think they've done a phenomenal job, um, presenting our case to you. And for that reason, I'm going to keep my comments very brief. This will give the community a better opportunity, um, to get their comments out there. I'd like to just give a brief introduction on my history on the project. Um, and then after that, I will turn it over to my client, Casey Christiansen, and he will share his vision for the community master plan that we've put together. Um, Bob did go over a, a history of the project. I was brought on board, uh, in 2016. Um, the previous design was too expensive. The infrastructure costs were too expensive to develop a piece of property at that time. So I was brought on board in 2016 to help reduce the infrastructure costs. Um, unfortunately still, uh, this is a very expensive piece of property to develop with the access road. So still the property was not developable at that time. So I was brought on board, uh, again, uh, recently, uh, with this new group, um, to improve upon the previous design, um, considering some of the allowances in, uh, the new zoning code, which, uh, allows us to rezone to this PC zone, um, go to more of a cluster development, a higher quality master plan. Uh, some smaller lots, but increased open space, a lot of, uh, a big increase in the amount of amenities, uh, we're providing. And the, the, the bigger thing is just to provide, uh, a master plan community that meets market demands with different product types. So if I could speak, um, to some of the item. Uh, that was a complete traffic analysis. It was submitted in a draft form just because we will take comments from Mr. Delagowski and expand upon the scope. Um, but it was a complete analysis of all the intersections and their impact. And what I would like to, to point out here is that a 2024 projection is, is the numbers that were cited. And, uh, the, uh, the worst, uh, instance on that, um, I-17 northbound ramp will be at a, so we will be going from a level of service D in existing, it's a level of service D with a 26.6, uh, second delay up to a level of service E at a 38 second delay. So we're at the very low end of the level of service E. And, uh, I'd like to point out that we were, we were also increasing to a level of service E, uh, even with the previous design of the 130 watt subdivision. Um, one more thing I would like to, uh, point out, uh, which Bob did mention was that, uh, the, we are still using the original, uh, access path to the subdivision, the access road, um, that's designed specifically to protect the springs and wetlands. Um, this was previously, uh, approved by the Army Corps of Engineers. So with that being said, I, um, will make myself available for any kind of technical related questions moving through this, uh, this hearing. Um, but I would like to have the applicant, uh, Casey Christiansen, speak to his, uh, just an overall view of his vision for this community master plan.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Christiansen, if you could please state your name and address for the record and then address the commission, please.
Hi, this is Kate Christiansen. Just to verify, can you all hear me?
Yes, yes, please proceed.
Oh, great. So Casey Christiansen, 7600, Doubletree Ranch Road, Suite 250. Principal, Arcadia Capital Group, Arcadia Communities, uh, based here in Scottsdale. And I guess I just want to start by saying, uh, thank you to the commission for your time tonight. Uh, thank you, staff. Bob, uh, we've spent a lot of time with Bob and Jay over the course of the last year, uh, working with staff to try to address a lot of the, you know, some of the issues, a lot of the issues that we, we, we saw in the existing approved 130 unit plan. Um, I would also like to thank, you know, Isaac and Ian for all their time. They've got a lot of history with this property, uh, and a lot of, uh, you know, technical expertise that I'm sure, so we'll get to lean on, you know, as questions pop up throughout this process. So, you know, just a, a real quick overview, you know, in looking at the property, uh, a year ago, when we were presented the opportunity, you know, it's pretty apparent, we've got some different things that are going on with this site that are unique, uh, unique to it. Uh, we've got a wastewater treatment plant off to the western, uh, property line. We have I-17, uh, on the eastern property line. Uh, we've got an existing manufactured housing development on the southern property line. And as has been previously mentioned, there's kind of a challenging, uh, point of access to actually get into the, the bulk of the, to get into the bulk of the site off of Tovar Trail, which takes into consideration some topography as well, the Tovar Springs, which, you know, we, uh, prior, uh, the current, uh, worked really diligently with, with the county to come up with a solution for that, for that point to help preserve not only a wildlife corridor, but also preserve, you know, the flow of those, those springs, uh, in perpetuity. And so we have, uh, we, we really just worked with Ian and the team to try to perfect, you know, what they had already done, uh, there at the entrance and focused our effort primarily on the master plan itself. Uh, and I, you know, I wish we had a, a copy. I don't know, Isaac, if you've got, or Ian, if you have a copy of the, the existing approved plan. But Bob referenced it, uh, it's a 130 unit plan. And, you know, I, I, I think in looking at it, it's, it's really just a large, large subdivision. Uh, it was at about 17% open space. All of the lots were identical. As Bob mentioned, uh, the traffic flows in and out of the subdivision are a little challenging and that folks on the very north end of the subdivision are having to kind of meander their way through multiple neighborhoods to, to find their exit out. And so when we were looking at it, I think, you know, our goal is to, to really create a place, uh, that can complement Kachina, uh, Kachina Village and create a master plan that folks that ultimately live there are going to be excited about and proud of. And so, you know, in our context, that means activating spaces, increasing open spaces, providing amenities, walking trails, a diversity of product types and a diversity of product sizes, frankly, so that there's, you know, optionality and diversity within the community. And so the, the plan that we've brought And so the, the plan that we've brought forth, we believe helps capture kind of all of those elements and creating really three distinct neighborhoods, three distinct programs of product that will hit multiple different market segments. You know, the base of the community will be all high quality, high quality, you know, material. Obviously, brand new housing stock and, you know, new exciting architecture. So we're, we're, we're excited about the plan. We think ultimately it will live better than, you know, what was existing, the existing approval. We think it provides for, and it certainly provides for, you know, more open space, more opportunity for that wildlife corridor opportunity and, and, you know, the, and so anyway, we are, you know, we're thrilled with where we're at today. We're looking forward to getting some additional feedback. We've tried to take into consideration the feedback received from our neighborhood meeting back in July. And we welcome, I guess, comments and, and questions. And I'll, I'll turn it back over to Ian to address really any of the, the technical questions.
Okay, thank you. Ian, are you there?
I am here, yes.
Okay, have you, do you feel that you have completed your presentation at this time?
I do. If at some point someone does want to see the old, so the approved conceptual, the approved subdivision plan, which is what would be developed if, if this development didn't happen. I believe Bob has it and can show it to you, but if not, I could show it to the, to, to everyone at some point in the future.
Okay, thank you. And if that comes up, that's good information. Do any of the commissioners have questions for Ian or the applicant at this time?
Just Commissioner Best, I have a question. We have a condition 13 that talks about fencing. It says that fencing shall be provided along all common boundaries between residential building lots and tracks A through F. As I look at the map of this, it, it seems to me that fencing between the houses and the wildlife corridor area, the open area down through the middle should be wildlife restrictive. And Ms. Simmons can comment on this. I would think that we will want to direct wildlife through it, if any come through it. And not get them involved wandering around through pretty tightly packed yards. So we might want to amend that so that there would be solid fencing between the backyards of the houses and the wildlife area maintained by the HOA so that it looks consistent and attractive over time. So you don't get 50 different people maintaining their own fences. And if you'd like to comment on that, and we could ask Ms. Simmons if she would like to comment on it.
I see, so as Ian Braun, I see, I see no issue with that. I, we've been working with Jessica throughout this process and, and will continue to. And essentially, whatever she wants in the way of fencing, whatever she recommends, we're willing to do.
Okay.
Commissioner Best, this is, this is Casey Christiansen. So just to address, I think, the question you're asking. All of those perimeter walls and fences will be HOA maintained and will be managed or you know, managed by the HOA. And to Ian's point, we will be working with Jessica to make sure that that's in compliance with what she sees is necessary for, to maintain that wildlife quarter. There was some question as well about, you know, the north, south egress and making sure that that was available. So we will be working with her closely to make sure that those materials are, are approved by her.
Okay, so I, so I'm happy leaving that with you and her, and I will try to amend condition 13 and simply say fencing shall be maintained by the HOA. Thank you.
Okay, are there any additional questions at this time from commissioners to the applicant? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open this up to the public. And what I would like to do is I would like to ask first if Sherry Peralta is available to speak on behalf of a group. Ms. Peralta, can you, can you communicate with me right now, please?
I am available. I am here.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Peralta. Do you have the names and addresses of the individuals that you are going to be speaking on behalf of?
I have about 16 or 17 of the 30 people, yes.
Okay, then let's even say that you're speaking on behalf of 16 or 17 individuals. I'm still going to give you 15 minutes of time to address the commission. So Mr. McNeely, after she gives, after she states her name and address and then provides the names and addresses of individuals she will be speaking on, I'm going to have you start the 15 minute clock. So Ms. Peralta, state your name and address, and then the names and addresses of the people you're speaking on behalf of, then the 15 minute time.
Speaking speaking for Jose Peralta, 2727 Teshapi. Speaking for Laura Corona on 1426 Gamble Oak. Gloria Reed at 2121 Teshapi. Mary McClure at 2772 Talani. Rochelle White at 2850 Talani. Maxwell Hodgkins at 2246 Gamble Oak. Greg Dubbs at 2752 Hanno. Robert Peralta, 2727 Teshapi Trail. Trish Leisure at 27.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Peralta.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. Last Sunday, there were several dozen people who met at the Raymond Park, and it is from that decision that I am now speaking. Many things were talked about during that meeting. Right now, what we are wanting is for the commission to delay its decision on the zoning change until findings are made and approved. And there is just simply too many unknowns right now. I'm going to be referring to the Kachina Village Planning Committee, the plan that was made and approved by the Coconito Comprehensive Plan by the Board of Supervisors back in 08. Many previous presenters had already mentioned the three findings that must be made to approve a zoning change. One quickly, of course, is that it, the change has to be consistent with the goals and the objectives of such a comprehensive plan. The change has to be in the interest or will further the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and welfare. And that the changes will not adversely affect the established character of the surrounding neighborhood or be detrimental to adjacent properties. In that Kachina Village Planning Committee, there are 18 different issues that need to be satisfied and addressed in order for zoning changes of those three major issues that I just mentioned must be established. First one is, you need to maintain environmentally sensitive lands and policies. You cannot you have to avoid the disturbance of distinctive natural features and natural land formations. I'm hearing things about squeezing roads in between rocks. And I would argue that that is counter to alteration of natural lands and certainly disturbing distinctive natural things such as the watersheds, the springs, the upper and middle Tovar Springs was mentioned. I'm not sure that culverts, manmade culverts is the answers to that particular sensitive area. Second issue is a wildlife goal. Many people just spoke about the elk. Okay, yeah, elk migration is a problem, but don't forget, we have more than just elk here in Kachina as far as protecting our wildlife populations in the habitat. And even the lady from the wild, the taking care of the wildlife says that they don't know where the elk are or where they're going. Again, too many unknowns. Nobody has addressed the wetlands. What is the impact on the wetlands that are protected and preserved up there? Nobody's talked about what it's like squishing this development between a freeway and the wetlands. How are we going to address the wildlife goals of the wetlands? And another wildlife goal that nobody has mentioned is the duck pond that's on Tovar. We're going to be increasing the traffic on Tovar, and no one has mentioned on how we're going to protect the duck ponds. And you do see people stop in mid-driving on Tovar to let the ducks cross the road. So it's not just elk. The other thing that has not been addressed yet is the air quality growth goal. We want to preserve our community's air quality. What's going to happen when we add more and more cars, more and more congestion, more and more dust control problems and surfaces for the roads? The air quality control is an issue that needs to be addressed. A big issue that was talked about was fire protection. We were fortunate enough to have in one of our fire chiefs that was present at the meeting on Sunday, that did a fantastic job of explaining to us what their goals are. However, most of us did not agree. We don't believe there are appropriate fire protection measures particularly for evacuations. We're getting quoted that the fire department thinks they can evacuate 500 cars an hour. We don't agree. People do not line up and just go without any problems, without any traffic. There's going to be multiple cars per household. It doesn't go smoothly. We don't see how emergency response can accommodate the 500 cars an hour that we're being told is set for the emergency response right now. So emergency evacuation has a lot to do with it. Public sidewalks, one of the commission meetings, excuse me, one of the Board of Supervisor meetings that I went to quite some time ago talked about how the developer is going to be responsible for repaving Tovar and putting up sidewalks. Bike paths, nobody has addressed that issue. Um, traffic control, lots of people talking about traffic control, both for possibly a rotary at the Shell station, but now I hear that the county needs to purchase land. So what about that? Why hasn't that then been discovered? Why hasn't that been investigated? Anybody who comes out of Tovar and has to turn left to go under the freeway does not wait just mere seconds to flirt, to turn left. I have had to wait on non-commuting times, sometimes four or five minutes to be able to turn left on Kachina Village. So it's not always just peak times. And it is a huge safety issue because people dart out of there and people dart out of the Shell Station and it is a mess. Even you said that further analysis is required. Yes, once again, not enough information. That is a big, big problem and a big safety issue that needs to be addressed. The other one, of course, for road conditions, people are talking about getting onto the freeway, onto the northbound 17. Well, it's not just a safety concern for all of Kachina. That's a safety for mountain air as well, because it's their only way of getting on the freeway. And people are totally not even talking about the mountain air folks. And even then, I have a quote down here that will look to A dot for that answer. Once again, not enough information. We're looking for other creative ideas, is another quote that I heard tonight. Again, not enough information. Domestic water supply, that's a big one that's been talking about. And yes, I understand that KVID says that there is enough water. But then we just got three years of 33% increases in our water. So I'm sure they're going to say that we have enough water. I don't believe residents are convinced. Along that goal is the surface water resources. Again, the wetlands and the springs of the pump house watershed. I'm not too convinced that that has been evaluated fully as well. And here's another issue no one has brought up. What about our dark skies? Flight staff's known for dark skies. We don't have a lot of streetlights that are here in Kachina, yet we're going to be adding hundreds and hundreds of cars and hundreds and hundreds of houses. There goes our dark skies. That's a problem. Another problem that has not been addressed is the sound. What about preserving our natural quietness of living out here in the forest and the noise pollution? That's a lot of reason why a lot of us moved out here. We don't want the city noise. Now we're going to have more noise. Now we're going to have more cars. I don't believe that's been addressed. I also don't believe existing land use goals have been addressed consistent with the established character of the community. Cramming houses into even smaller lots is not consistent with the character of this community that currently has the 5250 square foot lot sizes. Yes, we are talking about population density here. You want to make the 134 houses into 170, which does indeed create more dense. I do not believe that including open space into that density population formula. It doesn't count people. We're not talking about the density per person per acre. We're talking about the density of people for the whole housing division. And now you're wanting the density to go up. That is completely inconsistent with what Kachina Village residents have expressed for decades. Another problem, of course, is our infrastructure. And the people at the meeting on Sunday were referring to internet problems, which we have right now, especially with the virus going on. Good luck trying to get online. That's a big problem. Many parents also express problems with bus stops being moved, altered, and that issue of the safety of their children. Another concern is that for the disabled, in order to get around and particularly to be evacuated for that policy, that program is going to have to be increased and worked on substantially. I don't think that any of the residents can say in good conscience that we believe that any of these goals have been adequately found, have been adequately made, have been adequately approved, have been adequately discussed. You yourself mentioned that there were thousands of notices put out for this particular meeting. Look how many people showed up. Look how many people showed up to the citizens' meeting on Sunday compared to the five that you had previously. So when people are made aware of these issues, they do come together. They are concerned, and we do want to preserve the nature and quality of Kachina. So once again, we are asking you to please delay your decision. There's just too many questions that are not answered. And we ask that you listen to us. We are the people who live here. We are the people of this neighborhood. And keep in mind, you've got over 70 And keep in mind, you've got over 70 people watching right now, so people are obviously concerned. Please delay your zoning to condition, decision, excuse me, until things can be worked out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Peralta, um, comments this evening. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case tonight? And I would just like to add at this time, I mentioned it in my opening, uh, statement, that if there is anyone else and you feel that Ms. Peralta has adequately addressed your concerns, um, it's okay just to state your name, your address, and that you either oppose or support this project. So with that, I'm going to, um, look for raised hands. Okay, now I am seeing them. The first one that I see is Audra Slusher. Ms. Slusher, are you available?
Yes, I am. I'm right here.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record and then, um, address the commission. Now you will have three minutes. Mr. McNeely, would you please start the time now?
Hi, my name is Audra Slusher. I live at 2643 Tovar Trail. That is the lot right next to where the access road would go through. Um, I do appreciate Ian and Isaac's work on this project. I appreciate that the new plan has a greater amount of open space. I think that's great. I appreciate that they're trying to put in some affordable housing in Flagstaff, which is also a great need. Uh, my main concern is the traffic and particularly the speeds. Um, I live right on Tovar at the top of the hill. People speed up and down that hill very, very fast. And we walk our dogs and I walk with my children almost every evening and cars are speeding right next to us. There is no sidewalk and people are not going 25 miles an hour. The traffic study that Ian mentioned said that on average, people were going 38 miles an hour up the hill, which is significantly over the neighborhood's speed limit. I don't know what the solution is, but I cringe at the prospect of three to 400 more cars per day, if you think about two people living at each of these houses. Some 300 more cars a day going right by my house and right by my children and I as we walk. That's my main concern. I'm also concerned about the noise increase. I mean, my, the windows of my house are right onto Tovar Trail, so all these extra cars going right by my windows is a great amount of noise. And when construction is underway, all those construction vehicles too will be going right in front of my house. If there is any way commissioners that we could put in speed bumps or some way to reduce the fast traffic going up and down Tovar, I would beg you to do so. I don't think there's another option for putting the road in elsewhere, and I understand that, but something has to be done about the speed of cars going up and down Tovar. It's extremely dangerous. Finally, there's no good putting in a wildlife corridor if all the wildlife gets hit on the road. Uh, right in front of my house is a squirrel graveyard. There won't be any squirrels and raccoons left if they all get hit on the road, wildlife corridor or not. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Slusher. The next individual hand raised that I see is Berta Glawishnik. Are you, are you with us? Okay, Berta, can you hear me? If you can, please unmute and address the commission. Okay, what I'm going to do is I'm going to come back and we are going to move on to the next raised hand, and that looks like that is, uh, Hugh Hegy. Are you available?
I am, Madam Chair, and, and thank you for letting me comment. Um, my name is Hugh Hegy, H-E-G-Y-I. Diana Hegy is also here with me. We're at 3419 Chudito Trail in Kachina Village. We've been there for 18 years now. But my concern is the incredible density of this development. The, as I counted, 60 to 70 of these lots are going to be 3,200 square feet. That's the size of our house in Kachina Village. Um, most of the lots in Kachina Village are quarter acre lots. They're almost 11,000 square feet. That's four times larger than what this developer wants to put in, um, in, in the, uh, terms of density. The other thing that concerns me is the dramatic change in the nature of the community. This is a forest community. The entire development is heavily forested. The developer, Mr. Christensen, wants to glom a little city right onto the end of our forest community. That kind of density is not going to allow any sort of, of forest environment. It's going to be inconsistent with what we've got at this point. Um, density is like 3,200 square feet, uh, wouldn't be found anywhere in Flagstaff except in apartment or townhome complexes. So, uh, that's my concern. That's why my wife and I oppose this development. Uh, I would like to also comment that, uh, the elk are in the forest surrounding the, that completely surrounds except on, on the, the east side, Kachina Village. I see signs of them all over there, especially on the south side that goes into, to Pump House Wash. So they're, they're just trying to get from one side of the forest to the other, but there are signs of them all through the forest that surround our, our community. And that's what I've got, Madam Chair. I thank you and the commission for listening to my comments.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Hegy. Uh, I am going to go back and see if Berta Glashnig is with us. Your hand is raised. If you do wish to address the commission, please unmute and address us now. Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and move down to Dean Barker. If you would like to still address the commission, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, my name is Robert Dean Barker. I live at 2339 Tovar Trail. Um, I just bought this house this summer and moved in. Had I known that this development was in the works, I certainly would not have, have moved here. I work at home and, um, have done so since before the pandemic. And I, I haven't heard anyone address, um, the, the timeframe of this development. So I think I heard someone mention in the meeting that we had on Sunday that this is a five-year project. If I need to work every day with construction noise for five years, it, on top of, um, the internet traffic concerns that someone raised, it's going to, um, seriously hamper my ability, my livelihood to do this. And I, I'm just afraid I'm going to need to sell this house. It just, the whole thing seems incredibly ill-conceived. I didn't know about this, except for my neighbor telling me about it and, uh, one small postcard about this meeting. It, it just seems, um, as Sherry said, there's too many, too many unanswered questions and, and I think this needs to have a much more involved discussion. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Barker. The next raised hand that I-
I think I'm going to unmute it.
Okay, Berta, are you with us?
Yes, Berta Glavishnik, 2336 Keems Canyon Trail. Um, I live right next to Tovar and I will also, uh, say that going, uh, left out of, from Tovar onto Kachina, it can be more than a minute and the traffic coming from Kachina turning left down, uh, our way is, is a big, uh, hampers us a lot. I'd also like to, um, address the environmental issues that we have, um, not, uh, Pump House Wash and the wetlands also. I hike and bike up at the wetlands. There's a biking trail that goes right through that area. I don't know what's going to be done about that. I worry about the, uh, recreation that we have and having that area so close next to the wetlands. The wetlands is beautiful and to take that away from us would be very, very sad to have all the, the people and the noise. How about the ducks and the geese that come there, the eagles? We have a pelican around. I mean, this, this would all be destroyed. Thank you very much, Ms., uh, moderator.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, uh, Berta, for joining us this evening and thank you for your comments. The next hand I see raised is Jill Rundle.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address and you've got, uh, your, and then you're, address the commission, your three minutes begin now.
Thank you. My name is Jill Rundle. I live at 2835 Echo Cave Ovi. I'd like to first agree with all the previous speakers and their statements from Kachina Village on their concerns. Uh, in addition, I'd like to add, uh, that an HOA is not in keeping with the Kachina Village community or the area plan. I agree that all the speeding on the major roads is an issue and some of the minor arterials as well. If the development is to have their roads maintained privately, um, what are they allowed to use for snow and ice removal? Are they allowed to use salt or other derivatives? Um, I believe runoff from lots and what they use on the roads could affect the springs, even though they're doing all they can to maintain the integrity during construction, post-construction, uh, there would definitely be impacts. Um, I realize this is being, um, shown as a possibility for proposed affordable housing. Um, I've lived in Kachina for 20 years and in the area for 30, and I would say that history shows that housing like this will often be purchased for second homes and Airbnbs. How do we know that is not what this will turn into, which is already a huge impact in Kachina Village? And we can't seem to get that addressed, um, which leads to the fire increase risk by people that don't understand what they're, what the risk is when they come here, um, whether on vacation or moving here. Um, also, I was on the Kachina Village Improvement District Water Commission when they shifted the water department from the county back to the Kachina Village community. During those meetings, um, there was a request for the Summit Fire Department to be able to, um, uh, provide analysis so that we could feel confident as a commission that there was enough water available for firefighting needs. The representative for the fire department at the time said that there was not enough information that they had quantitatively to answer that question. I was not at the meeting on Sunday. I have every faith, um, in Dirk Foreman and his staff to be able to do all that they can, but I haven't seen any quantitative analysis for the water availability for firefighting, um, for the urban, uh, wooey-
Okay, and Ms. Rundle, let me, let me just give like a caution, your time is just about up.
Okay, great. I would say that we have high-quality wildlife habitat in the area, given the amount of water that we have, and that I would request that there be quantitative wildlife analysis, not the qualitative analysis that is currently available. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rundle. Appreciate you joining us. And if I am looking at this correctly, the last hand I see raised is Amber Belt. Okay, Amber, I saw you take, okay, yeah, go ahead, please. Your three minutes begin now.
Great, thank you. Um, I mostly would just like to speak out in support of, um, Ms. Peralta. I think she did an excellent and thorough job of bringing up, um, many, many, uh, issues that, that those of us who live in Kachina Village are concerned about with this development. And I think as someone who did voluntarily evacuate for the slide fire and had to wait for a very long time for the traffic to clear, it's a huge concern if we do have another wildfire and we're adding this many units, you know, what will happen as far as, um, evacuation is concerned? And I share similar concerns about traffic, about wildlife and all of those things too. And I will keep my comments brief because I, I do think Ms. Peralta addressed things excellently. Thank you.
Madam Chair, and Amber, this is Jess McNeely, the staff. Amber, we need your, your, um, address for the record, please.
I apologize. It's 3627 Ancient Trail.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McNeely, and thank you, um, Ms. Belt. I am not seeing any other hands raised for, oh, hold on, I take that back. Uh, we have Denise Knapp. Okay, please go ahead and your three minutes begin now.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman and Commissioners for this little bit of time. Uh, my name is Denise Napolitano and I live at 2423 Hanno Trail. And I would just like to comment that I oppose the zoning change being presented. One, the density of the planned community. In the 30, excuse me, 1,388 units that we have here in Kachina Village, only 35 of the parcels that we have here are smaller than the 5250 size square footage. That's the largest partial in the new proposal. So I feel that the density and the small size of those lots would really present a problem. And also the environmental concerns, in my opinion, have not been addressed adequately. The, uh, two springs that are there on Tovar are, um, fragile and they also need protection that it doesn't seem that there's enough studies being done on that. In my 27 years in Kachina Village, I have really enjoyed the rural aspect of here and I would like to, again, just express my opposition for the zoning change. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Could you please spell your last name for the record?
Sure, Napolitano, A-P-O-L-E-T-A-N-O.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, uh-huh, and it looks like the final hand I see raised is an individual by the name of Max. Max, are you there? Okay, um, I'm seeing some hands up and down. I'm going to go ahead and ask if Barry is available?
This is Max.
Oh, wait, hold on, I think we have Max. Max, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Chairperson, Chairlady, Chairwoman, sorry. Um, I am here to speak for Alan Ott of 2237 Gamble Oak Trail. My name is Maxwell Hodgkins, H-O-D-G-K-I-N-S. I am also speaking for Brian Whitlock of 2225 Gamble Oak Trail. All three of us are located within 300 feet of this subdivision.
Max, what is your, Max, what is your address, please?
My address is 2246 Gamble Oak Trail. And unfortunately, Sherry accidentally said my name earlier, so I believe I'm now limited to six minutes instead of nine.
Okay, please proceed. It begins right now.
Thank you. I previously worked for a developer and we used to, a third largest developer in Houston, and we used to take over defunct developments. And one of the main things, and I, and I do appreciate the, the things that a lot of people have brought up here, but something that is hugely missing from this development is parking. Um, there's not enough parking in this development. If, if you look at aerial shots of similar subdivisions, you're going to see parking lots. And I admire the developer for using, uh, making as much green space as possible, but there's not enough parking here. You can't park on the street when- You can't park on the street when, in the winter, I believe it's October through December, because of the blade. You're not allowed to. There's not enough parking here. And what that's going to do is that's going to, human nature being human nature, is this going to cause these residents within this subdivision to come into conflict with each other? And it's also going to cause them to come into conflict with our subdivision. I'm all for a subdivision. I live on subdivided land. I think it's great. I love it up here, and I hope more people get to live up here. But the way this is laid out, where the developer's saying, oh, they're going to park on the street, you can't do that because the blade has to cut. And also, they're going to bleed, since there's not enough parking within a driveway and a garage for a duplex, they're going to start parking on the street, and you're going to have problems with the blades. And also, they're going to bleed over into our subdivision. We are a very strong property rights state, and there's plenty of open carry. And we have a lot of respect for ourselves in Kachina Village, and a lot of respect for our property and our, and our neighbors' property. And you can ask the neighbors in my road. I'll go out and confront people that park in my yard because it's my right to do that. And I don't like to clean up oil stains. So this very easily could end up with a lot of sheriff's calls, with a lot of conflicts, when people start parking from this subdivision on other people's property within our subdivision. If you drive through our subdivision, you'll notice there are vast percentages of lots that are dedicated to parking. And that's because we all understand you can't park in the street and you can't park in your neighbor's yard. So any drive-through within a few minutes, you'll notice there are tremendous amount of our lots, though small as they are, is dedicated to parking. And unless people in this subdivision that they're proposing plan on parking in their yards, this subdivision doesn't have enough parking. They need to take that green space out and make a parking lot out of it, or build a parking garage. Another thing that I would like the commission to consider is we're moving into uncertain times financially. Lumber prices have gone up 40% in the last three months. What is going to happen if they don't finish this subdivision? What if they just finish Phase 1? You have all these roads cut in. They've got a sub LLC so they can walk away from it. They've got all these roads cut in. People start dumping refrigerators, couches, all kinds of things. It starts attracting homeless. Kids start going out there to party. All the trees are cut down. This could very much end up being a drain on the county's pocketbook, where the property taxes that it yields will not make up for the cost, the extra calls that the sheriffs having to go out there, the extra calls of the type of people that are attracted to houses that don't have cars because they don't go to work. This could end up creating blight because the subdivision is too high-density and just something as simple as parking, but also something as simple as it not being finished. We have a bad scenario if this development is not finished. I mean, a very terrible scenario. And we have a worse scenario if it is finished. There's an easement from this property to go straight to Gamble Oak Trail, which is our, my cul-de-sac. People are going to start walking through it. They're going to park their cars in front of houses within our, within our roundabout, and they're going to walk to their house because they won't have available parking there, especially in the winter. There's not enough parking here. I think there are solutions to this. They need to, they need to add parking lots to this subdivision, or they need to add a parking structure or underground parking. But I ask the commission to please consider that this is not a 21st century subdivision. This is the type of subdivision that was designed when people had horse and buggies. They have single-family housing, but they don't have enough parking.
Max, I just want to give the caution that your time is almost up.
Okay, I'll just say that they have single-family housing, but they do not have enough parking for single families or duplexes. And I ask the commission to think about the ramifications on the county's budget, on the conflicts that will create. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Max. The next individual is Barry. Barry, are you with us? Barry? Barry, I did see that you unmuted, but I'm not hearing you. Have you begun to speak? Okay, Barry, I'm not, we are not hearing you, even though I show you as being unmuted. I'm not hearing you. So what we're going to do is we're going to move to Doug Clayton. Doug, are you available? Okay, Doug, I see that you also have unmuted. Please state your name and address and address the commission, please. Okay, Mr. McNeely, do you know why it is showing the last two individuals as being unmuted, but yet the commission is unable to hear them?
Madam Chair, yeah, I see the exact same thing. I see Barry and Doug Clayton, both with hands up, both unmuted. I also see a Les, listed as Les Flagstaff AZ, whose hand is up. I also see a Jan Balsam, whose hand is up. And I also see a Priya Drews, whose hand is up. So imagine we can go on to, to these others and see if Doug and Barry can try again.
Okay, all right, let's go ahead and move to Les, please.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, hi, this is Les Reichert, and I'm at 4376 Canyon Loop.
Did I spell the last?
Yeah, you need me to spell the last name? It's R-A-I-C-H-E-R-T. And I live here with my wife, Rose Griffin, and she's going to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, and your three minutes begin now.
Thank you so much for opening the meeting and for chairing. And my husband and I do not approve of the additional extension on this request. We didn't really know about the other one. We haven't lived here but five years. We moved here because of the way this community is presently planned. And I feel that this new additional development is much too dense. It's going to take out so much of the forest up there, even with the green space. We saw a lot of that in other areas where we live, and it doesn't work. So we don't approve of this. We are worried about how the traffic is going to be affected, most of the things that have been brought up already. And I'm very concerned about water. We're in a severe drought situation. There's a lot of communities pulling off of the same well, and.
You know what, let me go ahead and stop you there. We cannot take testimony regarding water. So I'm going to have to just have you limit your comments to other topics, please.
All right, I apologize for that, I didn't know that.
Yeah, no, you're fine, you're fine. That's what I'm here for, so go ahead.
Okay, the other thing, as far as the elk, I've had elk standing in the yard right down the road here. If anyone who uses the I-17 corridor, there are elk struck and laying next to the road all the way into town. But I have definitely seen them along that area that this is proposed to. There was a young one this year laying in the middle medium, they never picked it up. So I know the elk are out there. There's, there's people who have a large riding stable across the street. She sees them very often, so they're there. And unfortunately, they do get struck. But I just wanted to come on and acknowledge my neighbors for their efforts. And I hope that we can preserve the original Kachina Village plan, which was not to put in these very clustered, dense housings that are going to really affect the quality of life that the rest of us moved here for. And I just want to thank the commissioners and the council for letting us speak. That's it.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much for your comments. Do we have Barry yet? Barry, I show your hand raised, I show you're unmuted, but we cannot hear you. Okay, I'm going to try Doug Clayton again. Doug, same for you. I see hand raised and I see you're unmuted, but we cannot hear you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and bump to Priya Drews, please.
Yes, thank you. It's Priya Drews, 2586 Moen Copie Trail, Flagstaff 86005. I just want to say that. I just want to say that I'm opposed to this. You know, this isn't why I live here, to have 130 extra neighbors to the north taking up, sucking up all the forest. So thank you, thanks for letting me comment.
Thank you for joining us. The next individual is Jan Balsam. Jan, are you available? Okay, go ahead, please.
I am. And I want to thank you for accepting our comments. I have submitted written comments on this already, but I want to reiterate that the Planning and Zoning Commission and the county supervisors need to follow the Kachina Village plan. There's a reason why it was written. And there are a lot of elements of this development proposal that are contrary to what we've all agreed to in the past. I think we have to be smart about our development. I think we need affordable housing in the Flagstaff. So it's not about the development, but it's about the density of the development, the character of Kachina Village. There are certainly a lot of other concerns I've put into my written comments already. And I just think you all need to step back and take a look at that because we put that together for a reason. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I'm going to go back once again and see if we have Barry, or Barry or Doug Clayton available. Okay, I see we're going to have to move on. I don't know what else to do at this time. I do see Dean Barker. Mr. Barker, you already had three minutes.
This is, this is Dean Barker sitting to my left. This is Barry Lyon. I have run to my neighbors next door.
Oh, Barry, gotcha.
Using his connection via proxy.
That's fine, yes, go ahead, Barry. State your name and address, and your three minutes begin now.
Thank you very much. I would like to first start with, I have three extra minutes from Elena Ott, A-L-A-I-N-A Ott. And her address is 2246 Gamble Oak.
Okay, okay, please proceed.
I'd also like to announce I have an additional nine minutes designated by the Dean, or excuse me, Paul Woott, P-A-U-L-W-U-T-T, from the address 3686 Ancient Trail, Flagstaff 86005.
Okay, and if I may, I would just like to reiterate the comments I made in my opening remarks, that if you do feel that the issues that you are going to talk about have already been adequately expressed, it's okay to abbreviate them for the commission this evening. That said, go ahead, your time begins now.
I will, I will attempt to abbreviate in an extreme fashion.
Okay, thank you, please proceed.
I have a very, very long residency and multiple property ownerships within Kachina Village. The original lot that this parcel sits upon, in historic fashion, states that it was going to be a wetlands. And that shows on maps and historic plat maps. Now, those wetlands were referred to as the wetlands that are now preserves that are adjacent to the property. This has not been taken into consideration. The original lot that has always been landlocked with no allowable access via road was once stated to be and planted to be four 10-acre lots. I think that I can speak for most of the residents that if it became four lots, six lots, or eight lots, that may be acceptable to the community of Kachina Village. That density of lots and comparison with real estate values would be commensurate with what the developer may relinquish from the current development. Briefly, it is not affordable housing. The infrastructure that will be provided, as stated by the developer, I am a owner within 300 feet and am currently carrying eight proxy votes against this development. It's not affordable housing in that the expected cost of these homes will be, despite this tiny size of the lot, will be in excess of $300,000 conservatively. Open space, as the developer states, does not compare as they have compared, and their only comparison is to the mobile home park next to and bordering this development. You cannot compare a mobile home park with what is essentially RV-sized lots to their lots and call it open space. Moving on, fencing and solid fencing does not mean wildlife flow. KVID capacity, as the engineers from the developers has stated, and this could be verified and clarified, states they have purchased one lot already on the adjoining cul-de-sac to run all sewage and water connections. These singular points of connection through one cul-de-sac will extremely degrade water flow and sewer flow. This extensive sewer flow into one single lot on a cul-de-sac, as the engineered current Kachina Village sewer system is a gravity-flow sewage system, will create incredible problems in the downward flow below that, that cul-de-sac. The, the, the answers to, as many answers have not been answered, the answers to how that will be achieved without impacting the existing community have to be answered. The singular point that I want to support is, Sherry's, we have to delay this vote or rezone it at a reasonable density that will accommodate the existing community. I, there has been no documentation provided by the civil engineers approved, as stated, on all of the, the springs that are involved. So currently, we're dealing with paving on Tovar. Tovar is, Tovar Road is part of the trail system. You cannot currently walk on that road safely due to the traffic constraints. They would have to repave and provide a sidewalk along the side of Tovar Trail to make that functional. The on-ramps, the lights, the roundabouts, the four lanes, the sidewalks, et cetera. I'm being brief. HOA costs for these homes, if added up, are not commensurate with any other stated HOA guidelines and stipulations with, throughout. guidelines and stipulations with, throughout the County of Coconino. The HOA costs just for snow removal because the, as stated, the Coconino County Road Commissions will not accept the current engineered roads and infrastructure as maintainable by their minimum, minimum requirements. Absolute minimum requirements. So, one more item, the commercial growth that is expected and apartments that will be continually built on commercial properties at the intersection of Kachina Boulevard and Tovar Trail. These apartments and continued commercial growth are not being contained, considered in the current decision. These lots are for sale now. They're already deeded for high-capacity apartments, and these are not being considered appropriately into the plans for traffic. There's restaurants, recreational vehicles, and high-capacity traffic during holidays and weekends. They're not being considered. This disables that intersection. I live here and all would agree. So, the unknown, unknown wildlife impact simply can be explained possibly by the already current traffic increases along Tovar Trail. There used to be hundreds of elk bedding down in the wetland.
Barry, this is Chair Ontiveris. I'm gonna have to interrupt you. Your time has almost come to an end, so please, just a half a minute more.
Understand? Dock bond preservation, dark skies, construction impact, the long-term construction impact of big trucks, and I'm within three hundred feet and all of us are, and my last, my last simple element is I'm carrying proxy votes from many of the absent or missing or people who couldn't be here tonight. How do I cast those proxy votes this evening against the development?
Okay, we do not take a vote. That's not how this meeting is run, so we're not going to be taking any kind of a vote. But your comments and the individuals that you have spoken on behalf of are in the record.
Madam Chair, this is Jess. What this speaker may be referring to is that applicant, or that neighboring property owners can file petitions that would be forwarded to the, to the Board of Supervisors, and that is done through our department.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much for that. Barry, did you hear that information that was just given?
I did hear that information, and I think that due to the length of this meeting, I would, I would prefer to defer this to another meeting where we can gather these proxy votes and more people within three hundred feet of the development to appropriately vote on everybody's behalf, and I will not have to read off eight or ten addresses and names.
Right. Okay, and I, and I absolutely understand what you're saying. What I, what I would like to direct you to do is to contact Community Development. Mr. McNeely is the one that just spoke, and if you could do that, he will be able to be, to give you the direction that you need on to get the information you have to him and to who it needs to go to, so we don't lose anybody in doing, no one falls through the cracks here.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. I will contact you and gather the appropriate votes. Is there an official moment at a later meeting where all of the people within three hundred feet can vote? And a secondary follow-up question, the residents of the mobile home park on extraordinarily small lots, they are residents and will be highly impacted, if not mostly impacted. Do residents at, as renters of a lot, do they, are they also allowed to vote?
Yeah, Barry, I can go ahead and answer that question. The commission tonight is, or any decision that we make is simply going to be a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors is the one that will be making the final decision on this. So, irregardless of any decision this commission makes, there is going to be another public hearing that you, that if it goes to the Board of Supervisors, if if the application, for whatever reason, is not withdrawn, it will go to the Board of Supervisors regardless of how this commission votes, and you will have another opportunity in a public hearing setting. And when you talk to Mr. McNeely, he can even explain that further.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Thank you very much for the Kachina community involvement, and thank you for what you do every day and the things that we don't know that you do on our behalf.
Thank, thank you, Barry. We, I, I think I can say we all appreciate those comments. The next person, I'm going to reach out to Doug Clayton one more time. Doug, okay, I see your hand raised and I see you're unmuted. Please address the commission.
Hi, this is, this is Marcy Bartlett. I'm answering for Doug Clayton.
Oh, okay. Marcy, please go ahead.
Okay, he, they're having technical difficulties. It's Doug Clayton and my sister Tammy, T.A.M.I.Eaton, E.A.T.O.N. They live at two, five, nine, zero, Palaka Trail. And my name is Marcy Bartlett, M.A.R.C.I. Bartlett. And my address is two, two, six, two, Tulani Trail. And we, all three of us just want to post that we, we don't want this to happen either. We agree with all of the comments that everyone's making tonight, so we oppose the subdivision as it is. Really like the Sherri's idea that we need to have all these questions answered before we go forward.
Okay, and thank you, thank you for that. I am not seeing any other members of the public that wish to address the commission, so. Is the commission?
I'm on the phone, call-in, not the Zoom, so I can't raise my hand.
Okay, can you please state your name and address?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Maggie Knight with a K, and I'm at eight, zero, two, six, East Old Route sixty-six in Williams. And I've been listening, waiting to see if a different call would be on, but I have a question about this Kachina conversation, if I might ask it to the group.
Go ahead and give me your question, please.
Sure. There was, I believe, part of the conversation between the staff about the wildlife, and it sounded like that there, I, I was curious about how you all look at the wildlife corridors, and it sounded like somebody was suggesting blocking off certain areas to push wildlife into other areas. And I, it seems like there maybe wasn't quantitative information to that discussion. And I realize I'm very new to this conversation, so I apologize if if the issue is my lack of understanding, but it seems like there wasn't enough quantitative information for this group to decide where the wildlife should go, and that seemed just to need more information, and that's all I had.
Okay, thank you so much for that. I'm looking again, and I am not seeing anyone else who wishes to address the commission. Mr. McNeely, are you?
Madam Chair, I am not seeing anyone else's hand raised.
Okay, all right. I do believe then that we are ready to close it to the public and move into commission discussion. So, Commissioner Clifford, we're gonna go ahead and begin with you. Your comments, thoughts, please?
Wow, yeah, after hearing everybody. I agree with a lot of the people who, who have left comments. I, I made notes prior to the meeting, and pretty much all of them were brought up tonight. I am stuck on the traffic issues and public safety. I do work out in that area. I have come down Tovar, waited at Kachina Village in Tovar for up to ten minutes to make a turn on a holiday weekend during at, in the evening, stuff like that, so I, I can understand what they're, what they are talking about. I also don't believe that the environmental impact issues have been addressed with Palm House Wash and Oak Creek. A lot of that was not brought up, and I think there's more study that needs to be done on that before anything is approved on this. Viewshed issues were not brought up. Coming south on seventeen, heading to Phoenix, or even heading into Kachina, you're going to be able to see this, this development sitting up on top of the hill. And we talked about viewshed a lot, and I think this is going to impede the viewshed of the Kachina area. Northbound turn on I-17, even southbound coming off of I-17 going to the gas station going to be a big detriment on the, on the community and the fire issue. We all have the fire issue. We live in the middle of a forest. We have to realize that. So, fire is always going to be an issue in the development. Reading through the conditions, I think the conditions are all there. But I do think there's still a lot of questions that need to be answered. So, I don't know if I could approve this at this time or not. So, I'm gonna wait for the other commissioners to talk and give, give their questions and answers and comments, and then I'll make my decision on how I'll, how I will vote on both of these.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Clifford. Commissioner Best, would you please address, go ahead and talk next?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like Commissioner Clifford, I'm struggling with this, frankly. I would like to start by suggesting a couple of changes to the conditions, and I'm not saying that this makes me want to vote for this. But I would like to point these out. Condition ten, after the word tracks, and temporary fencing shall be maintained between natural features and construction activities. Condition number twelve, at the end, native topsoil shall be retained and reinstalled to support the growth of native plants. Number thirteen, at the end, fencing shall be maintained by the HOA. As always, one of my primary considerations is, is the ecology of, you know, big picture ecology of what's going on here. At the south end of this development, there are four lots. And those could be built on today, and those are the four lots that contain the springs. So, I've been on the commission since oh-five, and I've been around this track a number of times with this development. We've had experts, spring experts out looking at the springs. We certainly don't want those lots to turn into single-family houses because that could really destroy the springs. And part of this development is an effort to do what we could to save the springs, and I think we've done okay. I, you know, it would be better if this was all a park, but that's not life in the real world. I, I thought parking was an issue five or seven years ago. And I agree that I, I just don't see how we're gonna park three hundred cars or more in this development successfully without, without having cars kind of drift out of the development. But I think my, my biggest problem with the, with this increased density is the traffic issue. I, I just, I think we're, we are headed for an issue where it all comes together, where you make a left on Tovar with all the activity that's there now, and taking a ramp down from level of service D to E is, you know, not the direction we should be going, because there are other, as was pointed out, there are other high-density development potential areas and lots in Kachina. So, I'm gonna listen to the other commissioners. At this point, I'm fairly uncomfortable with the increase in density. I think I would rather see it go back to what it was before, which was pretty dense. And I thought there was a parking issue then, but it just seemed to be more Kachina Village than this development. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Ruggles, you're, you're up.
Okay, I am here and listening. I've got to say that I have read every single comment forwarded on this case, as well as listened very closely to what the residents of Kachina Village have had to say. I've lived in Arizona for about fifty years, and I've had friends that have lived in Kachina Village back in the early seventies, and I've seen how it has developed. And it appears to me that the biggest problems we've got so far have been stated very adequately by the residents who have spoken this evening, as well as Commissioner Clifford and Commissioner Best. The biggest problem that we have is density and therefore the traffic that it adds, and I like Commissioner Best. And at this point, I've got to say, I'm rather uncomfortable with the, what we have. Even though we have open space, nevertheless, parking is a problem. And I know that snow removal is sort of gotten pushed off to the HOA because these will be private roads as proposed. And I know what kind of problems snow creates. Snowfalls are heavier in or to the south of Flagstaff and in the Kachina Village area than a lot of other areas. And in terms of parking, yes, it's going to pose a problem. I don't think you can deal with it adequately with the given, with the amount of parking that we have right now, so that's an issue. I would be interested in seeing how other commissioners feel about this at this point. But I, I realize we have to balance the private property rights of the developer and the owners of the property with what is best for the community. And at this point, I, I don't think we're doing that with the proposal as it is, but I'm certainly anxious to hear from the rest of the commission on this.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Williams?
Hello, everyone. This is a really interesting and difficult case. I spent some time out on this property today and was struck by a few things. One was, you know, the, the access to it is incredibly difficult and dealing with the springs, and I, I do think that the developers have done a really good job with their proposal. I do think that, that the, the springs. Um I do think that that the the springs uh can be protected. Um. But I I and it's incredibly beautiful up there. It's noisy, but it's really beautiful. And I was thinking about the uh just the layout of the lots and everything and how dense they are and how close they are together and and a lot of the the best vegetation up there, all the little gamble oak stands. It's going to be, I mean, most of that's just going to go away, which is kind of a shame. Um so I was sort of struck by that, but but when it comes right down to it, but the biggest issues for me are parking um because I just don't see that there's near enough parking um to make it work up here for this density. And that is a huge um issue. And I also feel it is quite in opposition to the Kachina um area plan, and I do believe that area plans have a lot of strength because areas have their own character, and that's why people choose them. Kachina is different even than mountain air. You know, I think people and and so when you come in at that, like the last development in an area that is, you know, eighty, ninety percent already developed, the burden is a lot higher to fit into that development. Um but that's that's what you get for being last, I guess. Um and so I just I just don't see this fitting in um enough for um you know, finding number three, consistent with the character of the local community. And I do think, you know, obviously, the traffic you know, I don't know the answer to that, but it seemingly is a problem, and people do drive. I was really careful to drive twenty-five up and down that road, and this development isn't even in there, and everybody, I was holding up traffic. And uh you know, I don't know the answer to that because it's already a problem just with the residents that live there, but uh. Gosh, I don't know. I I just I can't really say that I'm I mean, there there are some great things about this, but it's just too much for here, I think. So that's what I'm struggling with.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Walters, you're up.
I'd like to to just share a few of my observations here. I know there's been a big discussion about the wildlife. Uh one of the things that nobody's really looked at is we've had a very successful thinning prog- program in the wildland urban interface areas, and that's increase the habitat for wildlife. Um I spend a lot of time in the in in the woods and and I know this property in this area very well. Um the the elk have a lot more elk, deer, turkeys, all that have a lot more uh food and and habitat now with this wildland um thinning that's gone on. I I think that that's one of the contributors to this. Um the other thing is, I spent four and a half years on the regional plan looking at and planning and 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 working on these things, and and I'm a native northern Arizonan. I I've been home for about twenty-two years now, and I had a similar experience with a uh subdivision called Presidio in here in Flagstaff. Presidio was a a pretty high-density subdivision that was designed with with two outlets on the Woody Mountain Road. And at the time, I was the the chairman of the Northern Arizona Building Association and and I totally opposed it. I I felt that it was too much. It was going to be too much on Woody Mountain Road with equestrian estates and and Gore putting people on Woody Mountain Road, bringing them out to Old Sixty-Six and and uh you know, I've been proven wrong with that. It it just didn't have the impacts that I thought it would. Um I I've seen that. I've become more educated about that. Um I I I do understand in this situation that we have a a bottleneck where it comes into Kachina Trail there and and uh we we have a a very good engineering firm that's working on this. They'll they will be working on the impact analysis. They'll be looking at the sewers and the water and working with KBID on this. And and uh I feel pretty confident with this team. I was also on planning and zoning and the chairman for years and and saw the other development that came in for this property, and I think this is a far superior design for this property. I like the the that it's almost double the open space, which which has been pointed out could be turned into uh some type of a parking, and that could be done so that it's still um friendly with with the the parking mats that the grass grows through somewhat. And there's ways to deal with that, but a lot of the parking will be right in the driveways of these homes. I I I think that that, you know, we're kind of missing the point. We have a lot of people that want to come here. We have a lot of people that are looking for more affordable housing, and I don't know what the price point on is on this. Um I I just see that there's there's some housing, which is with the densities that they have here in that area or is is going to be beneficial to young families and starter families and that sort of thing as well. The the um the springs that are there are are going to be protected. The crossings that they have with the open bottom culverts are the proper way to 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 isolate those. Um I've heard it brought up about those lots that are down in that area, and I'd like to see those eliminated as part of this this uh approval process. Um but I I think overall, this is a a really um nice use of the land. I've been there on this property in in September when the um fire danger is the highest and the the winds are primarily out of the southwest. And and those are um some more developed areas. Like what I did notice when I was there in September a few years ago that that there was a a a pretty strong odor coming from the waste treatment facility for Forest Highlands. And when I say a pretty strong, it was it was beyond strong. And I don't know if they if they've repaired that system where where those fumes aren't going to blow over to that area, but that and the proximity to to I seventeen. Um I think that this this is probably a a pretty good use for this land. If my only concerns would be that that uh left in my mind is is um just bringing that traffic out and and how you'd control that, but I I think with a with a uh proper traffic impact analysis and and study of what to do and how to do this, that that could be mitigated. So I can find support for this and and uh I intend to support it. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Walters. Um, okay, it's time. This is Chair Ontiveris, and I've been making some notes, um and I'm going to start going through them. Uh when I look at in order to approve a zone change, we have, we all know this. There are three findings that have to be made. And right now I am struggling making finding number two and finding number three, and let me explain that. Number two, that the change is in the interest of or will further the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and welfare. I clearly understand that the traffic impact analysis that has been um submitted thus far is preliminary. I understand that. I understand that everything that has been required has been has been given and that there is going to be further analysis of that. But listening to this traffic issue, we we have the neighbors talking about how bad it already is. And one of the points that was brought up was that you really kind of have to do, you really kind of have to consider the mountain air traffic in this somewhat because they're also using the, you know, the on-off ramps in this area. So it's a very, very busy thing. As it sits right now, it's it's almost not a safe issue as it is. And this was talked about earlier on in another case that we had where the residents were saying, please listen to us. We have a real problem here. So I'm struggling with that, and I'm trying to, it's going to take someone way above my pay grade to figure out how how to deal with this traffic because hundreds of cars more per day does not make it a safe issue. I'm struggling with number three, and I feel like this is a bit of deja vu from our last meeting. And I'm going back to uh there where I was at there, and that is well, actually going to number one, excuse me, finding number one, it says that the change is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan and this ordinance. That finding requires us to look at the comprehensive plan as we move forward in our dis- in our decision tonight. And when you look at item number seven in the community character element of the comprehensive plan, it states that public input from individual neighborhoods and communities shall be considered in defining the existing historical character of those areas. Not maybe considered, but it it shall be considered. And we have heard I countless testimony tonight of people that live in this neighborhood. And they're telling us, hey, this doesn't fit the established character of this neighborhood. So if we listen to what they're saying, but but not, they actually gave reasons as to why it didn't fit the established character of the neighborhood. Um and there these reasons, these reasons were valid. And so I'm struggling with being able to make number three because the neighbors in this neighborhood are saying it doesn't fit the established character here. If they don't know, who would know? They're going to know best of what it of what their established character of their neighborhood is. So I'm struggling on that, and what I'm going to do, because I think I I think all of us are struggling a little bit, I'm going to wind back up to the top, and Commissioner Clifford, I'm going to let you talk again. You were the first one that spoke. You wanted to hear the other comments from your commissioners. You've now heard those. And with that, I would like you to maybe button up and finalize what your thoughts are and where you're headed tonight.
Hey, Madam Chair, this is Jess. Um just uh as I just trying to jump here in your transition uh to Commissioner Clifford. Um I I would point out that um you know, there's been a lot of of uh questions about um some of the some of the engineering and traffic on this project. So we do have the applicant uh the applicants with us, and we do have their engineer. So um just wanted to point out that they would be available to potentially address um you know, any concerns that were brought up by the neighbors or the or the commission, if that would help.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McNeely. And Commissioner Clifford, I'm going to go ahead and let you speak now, please.
Well, I can understand what the engineers and uh everybody was is going to say, but they don't live there. Um the residents live there, and they they live it every day. The residents of Mount near Mount Air live it every day, so they know what the traffic is. The people who service the homes out there, they live it uh when they're working out there. Um. I can see where Commissioner Walters is coming from, where it would be a good fit with the affordable housing. We have no idea what what that benchmark is. I am, I cannot make, I cannot make the findings. I cannot support this at this time. Um there's just too many variables. And the traffic issues are is the biggest one that I am I don't want the county to get into a situation where we send this for approval, somebody comes back and says, if you didn't do this, my family would still be safe. Uh like the lady said, walking down the street, people going by are thirty-five, forty miles an hour. I've seen that out there. Um I I can't, I can't uh in good conscience, I cannot approve this.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Clifford. Commissioner Best, I'm circling back to you now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um. I cannot make the findings as this is designed. I think that if the applicant goes back to something like the original density with these improvements with the improvements in the in the open space and the wildlife quarter and and especially those traffic circles, those are a great idea. Um. I I think I could make the findings. I've voted for this before. I I'm very very sensitive that in those four lots to the south, if this all goes wrong, four houses could go in there right on top of those springs. That would be tragic. So I think we've got a lot of ideas out here in play. Uh a lot of good ideas, a lot, a lot of work has gone into this over a decade. I don't think we're quite there yet. And um we are advisory to the supervisors. Uh if this uh fails this evening, that doesn't mean that the applicant can't uh come up with some new ideas and plans, be sensitive to what they've heard tonight, and present to the supervisors and be successful. And and I hope that this is a successful development. Again, the workforce housing thing, I've expressed that before. I I have no confidence in what that even means. When people can from Phoenix can buy these and people can use them as vacation rentals. Uh I don't think we have a solution for workforce housing just because we make small lots. Uh so that's where I am. I I hope for the, I hope for the best for both the applicant and the residents of Kachina Village and and the ecology of this area, the the plants and animals. And I think we're getting there, but I don't think we're there with this particular proposal. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Ruggles?
Okay, uh. Normally, I would tend to look at this uh in a manner that agrees with Commissioner Walters. Uh however, in listening to uh everything that everyone has had to say, and I'm one of those people who was on the uh committee that updated the last comprehensive plan, and this is something that uh if I backed away from make it uh compatible with the surrounding community, uh I would be a bit of a hypocrite in that respect personally. Uh so like I said, I know uh what uh Kachina Village was when it back when it first started uh and the character it had then. Uh there's a lot of that left, so taking that into consideration, I really uh I really can't support uh development like this. I heard one comment about, well, um an HOA doesn't even fit. Well, that's one of the reasons why Kachina Village still appears to be a little rough around the edges in places, and I think the people who live there prefer it that way, and it fits with the rural uh aspect of a place like Kachina Village. Additionally, I think that uh I think the springs with this development as laid out uh are are well protected. But that's only a small part of this. Uh the density is the big problem. Uh even though we get more open space with the zoning change such as being proposed, uh the density increase such as being proposed, the density increase ties to the traffic increase. I looked at it in terms of the, the number of residential properties in Cachina that exist now and looked at the number of 173 and that's about almost a 13% increase just based on the households in terms of vehicular traffic. And given what I have heard, it's a difficult thing to solve. You could probably take care of it where access comes in from the development, but that's only a part of it. We still have the rest of it. Just getting out there onto the freeway is a problem. It's going to take some further thought and some more work in my book. Additionally, I think that, as I said, the density is, when you look at it in terms of 40 acres, yeah, that might be a hundred, it might be approximately a quarter of an acre gross for each of the 173 proposed lots. But that doesn't tell the whole story. It's the total amount of increase in density, the number of properties that you're going to create that add to the problems that already exist. So when I take that into consideration, I take the area plan into consideration, which I spent considerable amount of time looking at today. And I, I certainly believe in following those recommendations to the greatest possible degree. I cannot support this as it is. I'm going to be in there with Commissioner Clifford and Best on this. Might be a little contrary to some of what others think, but that's where I am on it as of this point.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Williams?
Um, yeah, I think Commissioner Best really echoed my exact thoughts with his comments and Commissioner Ontiveras as well with struggling to find findings two and number two and three. I just can't get there with this iteration. And I know this project has kind of come and gone for a long time. And, you know, it will be developed and sometimes it's painful getting there because of these sorts of things, but I think in the end it can be better than, better than this iteration and maybe in the previous one too, which in a lot of ways I didn't even like as well as this one. But I just can't make the findings with what we're presented with here today. But, but I'm hoping that maybe there's a, some adjustments that can be made and something that all of us are a little more content with will come out of it. So that's what I have.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. And Commissioner Walters, do you have anything to add to your previous comments?
Well, I, I'd just like to say, you know, we're talking a lot about Cachina Village here and, and as a young kid, my uncle used to build houses here and I, I worked on them and I, I saw how it was all open forest and then they would move a little farther and cut some forest down, build some more houses and, and, and that kept on going. In this area, this is the, the far north end squeezed between a trailer park and, and I-17 and Forest Highlands Waste Treatment Open, Open Area Waste Treatment Area. And, and you know, I really don't have a problem with, with how they've developed this with the exception of they haven't really answered to me how they're going to deal with that intersection of Tovar and Cachina. And I'm, I'm sure they would and they could. The Board of Supervisors is, is going to hear everything that goes in front of them and they're going to, they're going to have to deal with this. They've heard all the, all the concerns of the area residents and they've heard our concerns and, and, and I, I think that they, the, because of property rights and that sort of thing, they deserve the chance to, to move this ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Mr. McNeely, you, before we made this transition, you said that you, our engineers are still on with us. And one of the greatest concerns that has been, I mean, spoken of and just repeated by the residents, by the commissioners, no one, no one is believing that we're going to solve this traffic problem and adding more to, and adding the additional homes here is not going to, it's, it's not going to get any better. It's only going to get worse. Can the engineer, can anyone in the engineering department succinctly and just very directly address and help ease some of the heartburn here on, on the traffic issue?
Madam Chair, this is Ian Braun, the applicant's engineer.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead and, and make it, you know what I mean? Speak directly to that issue.
Well, I think that we have, at, at this point, we've provided a traffic, a complete traffic impact statement and moving forward, we'll work with Tim Delagowski in whatever way we can to mitigate the traffic concerns. That's essentially all we, all we can do.
Okay. And, and you know what? I absolutely agree with you because even in my comments, I said, I know that the applicant has submitted everything that is necessary at this time. What I would like to ask, do we still have Tim Delagowski on with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. You've heard the, the very real concerns about traffic. Is there really any way to solve this problem adding the additional homes that this community, that this subdivision will bring in?
Yes, there, there are several alternatives and these are some of the ideas that we've been discussing here at Public Works. We could have a, a four-way stop at Tovar and Cachina Boulevard, which would stop the traffic on all four approaches to that intersection so that it would divide up, you might say, the pain of the waiting time, which is related to the level of service. Another option is to have put in a signal that would allow larger platoons of traffic to move through the intersection in a controlled manner. The ultimate solution to this is a roundabout that allows traffic to enter the roundabout without stopping except to yield to traffic that's already in the roundabout. But you would basically have to turn right to go left and you have to go around the roundabout. And if designed properly, they work quite well. So those are the three options that we've been looking at here in Public Works to address this congestion and safety issue at that intersection. What we need is more analysis of which one of those alternatives offers the, the best solution at the lowest cost. And because a, a four-way stop might cost, I'm going to say five to $10,000 just installing some signs, some striping and maybe some other small improvements. You go to a, a traffic signal that could cost a hundred thousand, maybe 200,000 depending on the complexity of that system. You go to a roundabout and you're talking about maybe 2 million, maybe 3 million dollars to, to achieve that. And so that's what Public Works is looking at right now is how can we get the biggest bang for the buck here? How can we accommodate the traffic, make it safe, but still make it financially feasible for the developer to make those improvements?
Oh, okay. And I actually, I, I absolutely understand what you were saying here. But could you tell me with a straight face that a four-way stop is going to solve this problem?
No, it won't. It will actually exacerbate it. The only thing that it does is allow traffic entering that intersection from each leg to have an equal opportunity to pass through the intersection. That, that's about all it does. The traffic will back up worse than it is right now, you know, with a four-way stop.
Right. Okay. Right. And see, I, I, I don't have your credentials and I already knew that. And I, I, just from a common sense perspective, that a four-way stop is not the solution here. So if we go into the scenario that you laid out, it is the traffic signal. That's a hundred to $200,000. Is a traffic signal really just a glorified four-way stop? Is it, is it really going to be a problem solver here?
Well, it, it could reduce the number of conflicts that you have at the intersection right now. What it does is it controls the flow of the traffic to a more organized fashion. You have platoons of traffic that move through, the signals change, and then you have platoons move from the other legs. That, that's its purpose. And so it would be better than a four-way stop, but you would still have delays. And of course, the ultimate solution is the roundabout.
Right. Right.
Madam Chair?
This is Christopher Trussler, the county engineer.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Unfortunately, Tim and I are not in the same room, so we can't quite get succinct with, with what you're asking. And, and I'd ask Jay Christelman to, to reiterate that at this stage, like, I mean, ultimately it's the commission's decision to make the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. And, and I just want to be completely transparent that, you know, is it the developers or is it being required of the developer at this time to have the traffic issue solved? And is it required by community development at Public Works to have, have these issues and these concerns resolved at this stage? I would, I would ask that we have asked Jay Christelman to, to weigh in on this.
Yes, thank you very much, Christopher. Thank you so much. And also, Tim, thank you very much for your deliberate and consistent message with regards to traffic improvement. The fact is, is that our subdivision ordinance requires certain levels of correspondence and those have been met. The traffic improvements based on the traffic improvement analysis through CD and E is adequate for this level of improvement. I love the dogs that bark during these hearings. That aside, our requirements, there's subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance have been So to promote the availability of moving forward is acceptable. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
On, okay, Mr. Christelman, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and let you play the devil's advocate to zone change. Number three, that the change will not adversely affect the established character of the surrounding neighborhood and where the comprehensive plan directs us in the, I believe it was the land use development directs us to consider the comments and the characterization of the neighborhood from the neighborhood. You heard what the neighbors had to say.
Yes, Madam Chair, you're absolutely correct. And the neighbors have every right, the community has every right to object to a proposal. And you're absolutely right, but that is not up to the director. That's up to the commission to make those determinations with regards to the findings effect.
Right.
And I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but, but, you know, staff presented the findings with regards to how they meet the comprehensive plan and the area plan via Cachina Village. But ultimately, the, the decision makers are the commission and the Board of Supervisors.
And, and thank you, Mr. Christelman, and I completely agree with you on, with, with that. And with that, we are going to, yeah, Commissioner.
Interruption?
Yeah, I'd like to interrupt if I may.
Yes, please go ahead.
Could you review for us or could staff review for, for us our options at this moment? One option would be a continuance to try to resolve some of these issues. If this fails tonight, it goes to the supervisors regardless of whether we pass it or fail it. We're, we are advisory. But there is an option to do a continuance and see, see if the applicant can resolve some of the issues and sort of get over the hump that we seem to be stuck on here at P and Z. So if someone could outline that and just...
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Yep. This is Jay. Thank you so much. And Commissioner Best brings up a terrific point. The commission is, is advisors during this moment, you know, making an admission to the Board of Supervisors. And I, I would like to defer to the applicant to refer to any questions that have been brought up that have not been answered fully, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Um, you know what? And I think just to recap, I, I think we've probably exhausted the traffic because everything that has been, been said by our engineers, by Mr. Delagowski, that's true. Every single thing has been submitted at this point and that's all they are required to do. And going forward, what they find is going to be what they are required to do even up to a roundabout if necessary. So I, I don't think that we need the applicant to address traffic any further, but there is parking that was also brought up and the, there are commissioners that are having trouble making, making the, the findings based on the level of increased density. So would the applicant or the applicant's representative like to speak to those topics, please?
Madam Chair, thanks you, thank you so much. This is Ian Braun, the engineer for the applicant. I would like to address, we, I think we have exhausted traffic, but there is still the issues of parking, wildlife, the springs and the impact of the water sewer system. As I, as I see it, those were some of the larger, and density, those were some of the larger topics that if I could just, just, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but if I could just briefly address regarding the springs, the entrance road, the, we have not changed, so the, the original access that was approved back in 2016 has not changed. We had environmental experts and the Army Corps of Engineers approve that crossing and approve that entrance. So I, I don't see how it couldn't be still adequate. The, the water and sewer system, that also has, has not changed. The, the connection to the wa, to the sewer system on Tovar Trail hasn't changed and the water system is looped through the emergency access as well as through lot 1138. So that also hasn't changed. That was approved by Cachina Village Improvement District and that's remaining the same. Parking, each unit, I don't, I just want to make sure everyone understood this. Each unit will have a two-car garage as well as two parking spaces in the driveway. In regards to wildlife, we worked closely with Jessica. We came to the conclusion that it, it wasn't going to be a, a major wildlife corridor. The, the difference in elevation from the I-17 up to our property is approximately 50 feet and like a 65% grade at some spots. Jessica kind of agreed that that wasn't going to be a main travel path for, for wildlife. So I think that if... So I think that if it would be helpful, and Jessica would find it helpful, we would put up an eight-foot fence along that right away. But I think the plan that we've presented, she was comfortable with. But we will continue to work with her moving forward. So I think all the questions and kind of concerns that were brought up during the hearing, we can, I'm comfortable that we can address and satisfy if we are allowed to move forward.
Okay, Mr. Braun, what about the density?
So the density in regards to...
The increase swayed over previously approved.
Madam Chair, this is Casey Christiansen, the applicant. If you don't mind, I'll relieve Ian of this one and try to address this issue for everyone. Because it obviously has been a hot, you know, hot topic. I think there's a couple of things that I think need to be considered, and I tried to address them in sort of my opening remarks. And that, I know one of the commissioners has picked up on that this evening, but we are sandwiched in between a wastewater treatment plant, a manufactured housing development, and I-17. And we are essentially a cul-de-sac whereby we have very few neighbors, immediate neighbors, that back up to our property. We have a freeway that's a neighbor and a wastewater treatment plant that's a neighbor, and we have, you know, permanent open space through the National Forest that is a neighbor to the north. So what we've tried to do is create a great place within this forty-acre parcel by increasing our open space from seventeen percent again to thirty-one percent. And we've come up with great product design that has been executed in really well-thought-of communities, high-quality product that addresses parking, both in, you know, the garage configuration and in the parking configuration. We worked with Bob and his team at Coconino County about on-street parking when and where appropriate. That does not include some of our major arterial or some of our major spine roads that work through, including those roundabouts and our major entryways. I think it's completely impractical for anybody to think that they're going to be parking off-site and walking, you know, a quarter of a mile to go home when they've been provided four parking spots at their own residence. So, you know, I think from a parking standpoint, we've worked really hard to address that. You know, again, from a product standpoint, I know everyone, you know, focuses on the size of the lot. But you got to understand that these are still fifteen-hundred to thirty, you know, three-thousand square foot homes. They're thoughtful floor plans. We've worked hard on the use and benefit easement and creating open spaces adjacent to the product. If you look, you know, we've got, most of our product is adjacent to open spaces whereby they're engaging that open space. And we're utilizing and taking advantage of kind of that side yard treatment. So again, you know, I think from a product standpoint, you know, we will be asked, I'm sure, as we move through the process, to provide more, you know, to provide more character study and some of those things as it relates to product. Yeah, I think it's hard to get hung up on lot size, though, because, again, we are taking open space and we are creating better, more usable areas. And we're not asking anybody on this call to buy a home in here. We're asking the market to do that. And we believe that by offering a better community and by offering a better amenity program and better product and a high-quality development, that we can do that. So, you know, I hope that answers some of the questions that were brought up tonight. Again, I'm confident that Ian and our team will be able to address the traffic concerns. You know, I guess one more thing on wildlife, I just mentioned it. Again, we had a plan that was approved in 2016 that was scrutinized by multiple departments. And that plan found that we needed to maintain a hundred-foot corridor through this development. Not only have we maintained that corridor, which was approved in 2016, but we've increased that corridor by nearly six acres. So, you know, again, you know, we've only done things in my view, obviously it's my view, but we've only done things that have enhanced the overall plan. And the product itself is really impacting no one but the freeway, the wastewater treatment plant, and, you know, the open space that's permanent to the north. So, anyway, those are my thoughts, and we welcome any other questions and look forward to your guys' response.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Christiansen. I'm going to go ahead and take it back to commission discussion now. Mr. Walters, Commissioner Walters, I believe that I left off with you. Do you have anything additional?
Well, I think that how we've addressed subdivisions and concerns in subdivisions in the past is by adding items that the developers have to address. I think in this situation, we've identified some things that are certainly worthy of a condition to be added to it. I sympathize with the one lady, and I apologize, I've forgotten her name, that said she lives close by and walks with her kids. I walked alongside that road a few years back, and there is no sidewalk there. And I don't care if there's more traffic or less traffic, it's dangerous without a sidewalk or a trail or something alongside that on the open space side. As far as the determination of whether we need a roundabout or a light in that situation, I think that there's other properties that are, or to the south of the station there that could very well end up being more high-density living arrangements, and that would also add to the traffic. So, and there's an expansion on the convenience store there that we saw. And I think that we can address these concerns that we have with conditions. The developer just came and explained that there's four parking lots, I mean, four parking places in each resident, two inside and two on the driveway. So, you know, he's addressing a lot of the things here. I know this is a very emotional proposal for a lot of the residents that are there, but I think that if you really delve into this, you'll see that most of these things have been answered. And what hasn't been adequately answered, at least adequately for some people, can be answered by adding some conditions to this.
Okay, and can you propose a condition? Do you have a proposed condition that's going to make us, you know, perhaps sway some of the commissioners here that are really struggling with this?
Well, I think that the parking, in my mind, and I look at a lot of this, you know, developments and how things are done, and I think that the parking is a non-issue to me.
Okay.
The wildlife corridor is far superior to what we approved in the past. So that's a non-issue to me. I also understand that the thinning that's been done in the forests has created so much more feed and browse for the wildlife that they're in the forest now, and they're not having to come out to the wetlands except for water. And the water does periodically flow through here, and there's a lot of cattle tanks, for lack of a better term, that are out in the forest now to give them water in the area to the south of here. So I think that we're, or to the west of here, I think that we're looking at it needing a condition here about the traffic and the traffic input, both on the feeder road to this subdivision and on the intersection at Kachina there, so...
And what are you suggesting?
Well, I'm a little limited in my situation here that I can't, I didn't have a chance to print this out, and I can't get to the conditions, so I'm going to have to ask for a little help on that. But I'd like to add a condition that says that the developer has to work with the county's engineers to adequately address traffic impacts.
Well, that's already there. Like, that's already been established. So, okay, I do, okay, I appreciate your comments. In any of this conversation, do any of the other commissioners, do they feel that they have changed their mind? Or do they want to, this is going to be the last shot at it. Does any other commissioner have anything further to say, and I will weigh in very last at this point?
Okay, I'd like to comment on that. I think that based on what Mr. Braun and Mr. Christiansen have had to say, as well as Commissioner Walters, I've got to change my stance on this a little bit. Really, in two respects, I think what Commissioner Walters is suggesting in terms of dealing with the traffic with a condition, yes, that would make it acceptable to me. The other thing that he also pointed out is the location of this. And to my way of thinking and from what I have looked at, essentially, as far as the rest of Kachina Village is concerned, this is almost an out-of-sight, out-of-mind situation. It's probably the best use of that property because of where it is, sandwiched in between the wastewater treatment and the interstate. And because of the interstate, it's going to be a little noisy. I know only too well the noise levels that you get from an interstate that's heavily traveled. So this was an issue with one of the speakers previously. If you're anywhere close to that interstate, it's not going to be quiet, not like we have in a lot of other areas of the county. But in terms of the traffic, that is the one remaining thing. And if we can address that with a condition, I would be willing to support this.
Okay, and Mr. Ruggles, let me throw this back at you now. Because we're not traffic engineers, so it is beyond, it is really outside of our expertise to be saying, you know, what the developer is going to have to do. Because I don't want to see it be a four-way stop. Okay, that, to me, would not work, but it's not up to me. We can't really dictate here what has to be done. That's for the engineers. So what are you suggesting? What kind of condition are you suggesting that would allow you to be able to make the findings?
I do not think that being specific in a requirement such as a four-way stop, a traffic circle, a traffic light should be a part of any condition that we create at this point. That would place shackles on everybody. We did that, even though it's just a simple recommendation to the board. I'm not too sure, but what we already have in the conditions may address that. The preliminary traffic study is one thing, but we're going to have to go forward with, or the developer will, with a more detailed traffic study that addresses these issues to the board in order to get final approval for the plat.
Okay.
He may not, may not be necessary to add anything, but I see Bob would like to comment on that.
Okay, Mr. Short, go ahead, because I'm looking at condition number, I'm looking at condition number twenty-seven right now.
That's exactly what I was looking at, Madam Chair, which basically says that a new TIA, an updated TIA would be required, and the applicant shall install all improvements identified by the TIA. I'm not really sure what else we could add at this point.
I would agree with that, and having read the conditions initially, my initial thought was that that would be sufficient because the final arbiter in this is going to be the board. And having that traffic study done at that point, that should give the board sufficient information to decide whether this is a go or not.
Okay, and I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Ruggles. Mr. Short, can you speak to that? Because reading number twenty-seven, if I'm understanding Commissioner Ruggles correctly, he's saying, you know what, let's get this done, and let's tell the board. So when it goes in front of the board, let's let them know right up front. Is it going to be a four-way stop? Is it going to be a traffic light, or is it going to be a roundabout? Is that what you're saying, Commissioner Ruggles?
I think that that would be the recommendation based on the final study, the final traffic study. And my engineering background says that, boy, the, our Public Works folks, the engineers, they have got it pegged correctly in terms of bang for the buck. And I think we can forward a recommendation to the board to go forward with this. But they're going to have the final traffic study to make a determination on. We don't have that here, but I think that based on that condition, we could go forward with a recommendation to the board that, yes, I think that this is an approval recommendation.
Okay, all right. I'm also reading condition number twenty-seven. Commissioner Ruggles, I know that you have read it and you're seeing it, and that satisfies the traffic issue for you.
That was my initial impression. When I hear what everyone else has had to say and what engineering has had to say about this, I would say yes.
Okay, all right. Do any other commissioners wish to say anything, or should I go ahead and give my comments now?
Commissioner Onavero, I have a couple of things.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Williams.
Well, now my issues with parking are no longer issues. I think four parking places per house is adequate. I do think that the traffic thing can probably get worked out one way or the other, and that it could be an improvement. And this area is so tucked away, hardly anybody will see it. I mean, with the topography and everything, and it is sandwiched between truly the freeway and the wastewater treatment plant. And so now, to me, the really in conflict with the character of Kachina is not as big of a deal because unless you're one of the few lots that border that southwestern corner, you'll never see it unless you walk back there. So my biggest concern is, safety-wise, if you have kids in this neighborhood and walking down the road to Raymond Park or to the Dollar Store and, you know, on bikes, that seems to be the biggest safety issue to me without a sidewalk or some sort of multimodal path along Tovar Trail. So I don't know if that's something that can get worked in, if that's something that the developer might be able to help with, that would, I think, help the entire community up there. That's the biggest safety issue I see right now.
Okay, okay.
This is Commissioner Best. You know, I think the first thing I said this evening was asking about traffic and whether a TIA kind of took... and whether a TIA kinda took the traffic issue out of our authority. And the answer was, no, not really. So I, I'm kinda still where I was, feeling a little better about the parking. But I think that, I think a continuance would be a smart idea and do something in, for the next meeting that makes the community feel like, wow, traffic is better now. It's worth it to have this here. Because, again, part of our job is to listen to the community that's in the comprehensive plan. And I haven't, this is, this is an unusual meeting where, where we keep hammering at this after we normally would be voting. But the community hasn't had a chance to come back and speak. And so, again, I, I think it'd be smart to have a continuance. And without a continuance, I, I think that I still can't make the findings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. As Chairwoman, I would like to move forward with this tonight. And the reason being is because we are advisory to the Board of Supervisors. They are going to be the ones that make the ultimate decision. And that is also going to allow the residents, the neighbors, to be able to express to the Board of Supervisors on, again, as they have expressed to us, and now even after hearing our conversation, on they're going to get another shot at being able to speak. So I'm not in favor of a continuance tonight. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna just lay out where I'm at. Because after hearing, after further conversation, and may I just say for everybody that is listening in the public, staff, and the commission already knows this. This is why we have commission discussion. Because it allows an interaction of ideas. And we may think we know which direction we're going, and then a little more information gets shared and you start, you start going, you know what, I never quite thought about it exactly like that. And it makes you rethink the way your first initial impressions. And I can see that that has really happened, just in the discussion that we have had. I can say that it has personally happened with me. The parking situation, really, it is a non-issue to me anymore. So that is off the table. The other two issues that I previously expressed were in regards to finding number two regarding the safety and finding number three regarding the established character of the neighborhood. After, I do wanna say that I recognize that there is a traffic issue, but it is outside of the purview of this commission to solve that. Everything that the applicant has been legally required to do at this point regarding traffic has been done. The further studies are going to be what directs the next step, how to make this a safe and comfortable move of traffic. So for me, because I know the developer, the applicant has submitted all that is necessary, that this isn't, this isn't what it's going to finally be, that alleviates my concern on condition, on finding number two. I can make finding number two now. Finding number three regarding the established character of the neighborhood, that was another one that I truly struggled with. So let's balance that with the, the fact, this is a fact. We have I-17 on one side and we have Forest Highlands Wastewater Treatment on the other. These are facts. That is, that is beginning to sway me. The other thing where I have been thinking is, is that I have been, I have seen all of these. I've been on the commission long enough, like Commissioner Best said, that I've seen all of this come through. And the truth, truth be known, in my opinion, this is the best laid-out plan for this neighborhood. I do wish that it had less density. But that said, it is the best laid-out plan. Like Commissioner Walter said, this is really, really tough. Because we here, I just want, I just want everyone in the public to know that I heard you tonight. And this is a very, very difficult situation. And that's why we have the findings that help us guide. If we can make the findings, then we have to vote to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors. It's just how it goes. It's not a personal opinion on whether we think we like it or whether we think we don't. And tonight, I'm going to have to really bring myself back to that equation. And now, after further discussion, I can make the three findings necessary to approve the zone change. So I am going to be voting to approve recommendation, to approve recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Now, we are going to be headed to a vote right now. And I honestly think this is the first time in over a decade where I have sat on this commission where I really don't know how this is going to come down. So what I would like to do is I would like to ask a commissioner to make a motion, and we will see where it goes.
Okay, I'm willing to do that.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, please proceed.
Since we have two motions that are going to have to, to go through on this, I will begin with ZC 20-011. And I move to approve or make a recommendation for approval to the Board of Supervisors on the zoning change with conditions as stated by staff.
A second.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Walters. I'm gonna do a roll call vote right now, and this is for ZC 20-011. All in favor of voting to make a recommendation of approval to the Board of Supervisors, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Okay, you know what, let me rephrase that. When I do this roll call vote, if you approve it, aye. If you do not, please say nay. So, once again, we have a motion in front of us to approve recommendation of approval to the Board of Supervisors for ZC 20-011. Commissioner Clifford, yea or nay?
Yea.
Okay. Commissioner Best?
Nay.
Okay. Commissioner Ruggles?
Yea.
Commissioner Williams?
I would like to see it go to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
So I guess.
Motion in front of us is to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors. Are you voting to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors? If so, vote aye. If not, vote nay.
I think I'm gonna vote nay.
Okay. Commissioner Walters? Okay, and this is Chair Ontiveros, and I'm also voting aye. Now, I'm going to go over this to make sure it's correct. We have Commissioner Clifford voting aye. We have Commissioner Ruggles voting aye. We have Commissioner Walters voting aye. And we have Chair Ontiveros voting aye. That is four ayes. We have Commissioner Best voting nay. And we have Commissioner Williams voting nay. So we have four ayes and we have four nays. So the motion to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for ZC 20011 passes with a four to two vote. The next one is SUB 20011. I'm going to need a motion and a second on that.
Okay, I'll, I'll be the bad guy here. I would like to move that we submit to the Board of Supervisors a recommendation for approval of SUB-20-011.
I second that.
Okay. I've got a motion by Commissioner Ruggles, a second by Commissioner Walters to recommend approval of SUB 20011 to the Board of Supervisors. We're gonna go through the same roll call vote. If you recommend approval, aye. If you do not, nay. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Nay.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
And Chair Ontiveros also vote aye. So I have five aye votes and I have one nay vote by Commissioner Best. So the motion passes on a five to one vote to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for SUB 20-011. And with that, we have concluded this case. And we will now move on to case number CUP 20-037.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Zach Schwartz with the Planning and Zoning Division of the Community Development Department. I first wanna thank our applicant, Mr. Rucci. I hope I'm pronouncing that right for hanging in there for that long, long case there. But we'll move through this as quickly as possible. This is CUP 20037. It's a request for a conditional use permit for a 40-foot metal shipping container. And the parcel is located at 325 Double Cabin Road in Double Cabin Park. This is south of Mormon Lake and north of Happy Jack. So you can see this area is the Double Cabin Park area. Here we have Lake Mary Road going down to Happy Jack here and up there not too far. It's almost equidistant between Mormon Lake and the Happy Jack area. And here is an aerial photo. So all these parcels over here are in the G general zone, a single-family residential, typically 10-acre minimum zone. And you can see there are some homes in the area. To the west here, you can see right adjacent to this parcel, this is Forest Service Road. And people would be driving up Double Cabin Road here to get to the rest of these parcels up in this area. So this parcel is actually sized 2.5 acres, where 10 acres is typically required, except for its legal non-conforming. Basically, it was created prior to the 10-acre minimum and it's grandfathered. You can see that there's a meadow up here to the north of the subject property and a tree line that kinda makes a V or an arrow pointing north almost through the subject property. Here's a photo of the property. So this is taken from Double Cabin Road looking east into the property. You can see there's an existing shed on the property. This is less square footage than one requires a building permit. And it's sort of like a tan color, there's some water tanks there as well. The applicant proposes a 40-foot metal storage container as a wheat color to blend in with the meadow to the north. Others that live in the area would pass by this property heading north and see the container with the meadow behind it. They would also, on their way up, just south, a couple parcels, they would pass by another metal storage container that was approved by the commission in 2013 with a cabana attached to it. And it's a similar sort of tan-ish color. The applicant proposes the unit at 10 feet from the southern property line, where the typical interior side setback is 20 foot, except for that structure's under 600 feet, can be as close as five foot from the property line. So staff is seeing that as meeting the requirements. So here you can see the parcel, and this is where the applicant wants to put the 40-foot metal storage container. And this, I believe, is similar to the color that the applicant is wanting to paint the unit. As far as citizen participation, the applicant sent letters to five neighbors owning property within 300 feet of the subject property, and no comments were received by the applicant or by staff. There was no contact with staff on this case. The comprehensive plan only really seems to have one policy in the community character element that deals with this and basically encouraging property maintenance and storing things inside of buildings rather than having open-air storage. As far as the findings of fact, they are up here for you. And I've kinda gone into that in the staff report, but staff is able to make all four findings of fact and recommends approval of CUP 20037, subject to the seven conditions below, or of the staff report, I'm sorry. And I'm happy to take any questions from the commission at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Do any of the commissioners have questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to have the applicant or the applicant's representative address the commission. And I would just like to ask the applicant if you have read the staff report and if you agree with the conditions.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Please state your name and address for the record, and then go ahead and address the commission.
Thank you. Thomas Rucci. And the address I reside at is 1441 West Crystal Way, which is a Phoenix address. And I briefly saw the conditions on the, the screen here. I didn't really get a chance to, to read them. But I do wanna say that, thanks to Bob Short, he was really patient with helping me do this. And it was through cut and paste. I really wasn't able to send the materials directly through your chain there as far as PDF files. So that's about all I have to say on that.
Okay, and so you have read the staff reporting, you agree with the conditions? Or you agree with the conditions? I realize there's, you know, maybe a little bit of gray area there, but is there otherwise any other concerns?
Not that I readily could see, no.
Madam Chair, if I could interrupt real quick, I can read the conditions. There's only seven of them. We did send the applicant the staff report. Maybe, maybe the, Mr. Rucci had missed it. But if it might be clear for everyone, I could just quickly go through those. Or if we feel comfortable enough, we could just go forward.
Yeah, Mr. Schwartz, why don't we do that? So there is no misunderstanding, because I don't want the applicant to have any confusion.
Absolutely. The first condition that is put on this, so this means, Mr. Rucci, that after this approval goes forward, we'll need to make sure that all these conditions are met prior to or during placement of the shipping container on the property. And it should be pretty easy. I'll work directly with you and we can just get it all done. But the conditions that I've written are the following. One, that there should be no signage on the metal storage container. Most of these conditions are really pretty boilerplate, by the way. Two, the only utilities permitted shall be electricity for lights and outlets, i.e. there shall be no plumbing or mechanical. The addition of electricity requires an electric permit. Three, the container shall be painted an earth tone or a green color to blend in with the surrounding environment. A paint color sample shall be provided to staff and approved by staff prior to placing the container on the subject property. Paint on the unit shall be kept in good condition for the duration of the use. The fourth condition, the metal storage container shall meet all development standards of the general zone, including setbacks, building separation, and structure height. Five is, use of the unit is for storage of personal effects owned by the property owner or tenant. There shall be no commercial use of the unit, for example, rental of the unit to people not residing on the property. Six, the unit shall not be used for residential use or keeping of animals. And seven, nothing shall be stored on top of the unit. And those are the conditions that I've recommended to the commission.
I agree with those conditions, yes.
I agree with those conditions, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you for that. And thank you, Mr. Schwartz, for that clarification, so everyone's on the same page here. With that, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission on this case tonight. And seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public and open it up at, at commission level. So we can either discuss or move to a motion.
Ms. Clifford, I think it's a cut and dry. I think we can just make a motion and approve it.
Okay, so Commissioner Clifford, why, why don't you go ahead and do that then? Start us off.
Madam Chair, I make a recommendation that we approve CUP 20-037 with the seven conditions as stated in the report.
I'll second that.
I'll say, okay, got two seconds.
Commissioner, Commissioner Best got the second in on that. So we have a motion by Commissioner Clifford and a second by Commissioner Best to approve CUP 20-037 with the seven conditions contained in the staff report. All in favor, say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
And Chair Ontiveris, I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously, and CUP 20-037 is approved. The final item on the agenda tonight is a call to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission at this time for items not on the agenda? And seeing none, we are going to adjourn the meeting. And with that, good night, everybody.
Thank you all, have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night, see you next time. Thanks, Bob.